Okay, welcome back everyone. I move that we reconvene this September seventeen twenty twenty one meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. So let's get right into it, 'cause a lot left to be covered. So to calendar number three seventy seven dash twenty one dash S. And as a reminder, the companion matter of three seventy eight dash twenty one dash C is has been withdrawn. So as Counselor Robert Gamra gets situated, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station with a seven eleven convenience store with ten onsite parking spaces, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant fifty thirty five West Lawrence LLC. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site, landscape and tree removals, and tree removal plans, elevations, and associated landscaping and site details dated September sixteen twenty twenty one, prepared by Alakis Architects with the proposed floor plan dated May sixth twenty twenty, prepared by GTG Group. Confident we have you on?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rob Gamra, on behalf of the applicant fifty thirty five West Lawrence LLC. Happy to be here. And with me as well today is Christopher Alakis, he's the developer and applicant. Also, Daniel Ackroyd, who is a senior real estate officer with seven eleven, Mr. Peter Pulos, our appraiser, and Yusuf Gori, who is the architect for the project. Just briefly, by way of summary, our sole request, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, now is for a special use, having withdrawn the variation request for a gas station at the property located at fifty twenty seven through fifty thirty five West Lawrence. The property is located at the intersection of Lawrence and the Kennedy Expressway exit ramp on the outbound side of the Kennedy Expressway. It is a site that is approximately twenty-three thousand square feet in size, currently improved with a gas station and two service bays for the repair and service of vehicles. Applicant is the contract purchaser and proposes to demolish all structures, existing structures on the site, and construct a new seven eleven retail store and gas station with ten parking spaces. I'll note that in our original application filing, there were a total of eighteen parking spaces. And in working with DPD staff, the parking has been reduced to ten spaces adjacent to the retail store. And that's really the genesis for no longer needing the variation request. There will also be four fueling stations and substantially enhanced landscaping around the perimeter of the property, as well as in all vehicle parking areas. There also no longer will be any service bays or vehicle service repair facilities at this site. The retail store and gas station will be operated by seven eleven and will have active security operations and systems at the property. And they will provide maintenance to keep it clean and free of litter and garbage. We have met with Alderman Gardner on several occasions, and the Alderman conducted his own community outreach that resulted in a letter being of support being issued by the Jefferson Park Neighborhood Association. I did submit that to ZBA staff, and hopefully that is in the board's packet. We also work closely with DPD on the plan that you have before you today, and think we have a are presenting the best plan for this particular location. That's all I have for my summary, Mr. Chairman. At this point, i- if you prefer to swear in the all of the witnesses collectively, or I can call my witnesses one by one and have them sworn in.
You know, I'll just go down the line. So let's start with Chris Ilakis. Chris, will you please state your name and address?
Christopher Ilakis, Principal of Equity, two twenty-six North Morgan Street, Chicago, Illinois, Suite three hundred.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, so Daniel Ackroyd, will you please state your name and address?
Hi, this is Dan Ackroyd, address nineteen hundred East Gulf Road, Schaumburg, Illinois, six zero one seven three.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you. We've got Peter Pulos still sworn in, and we've acknowledged his expertise. So finally, Yusuf Gori, will you please state your name and address?
Sure, it's Yusuf Gori, two twenty-three West Jackson Boulevard, Suite one thousand, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six zero six.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, just one real quick brief point before I call the first witness. Mr. Gori will not be a witness in our case in chief, given that we no longer need a variation, but I did want him sworn in available in case there are questions for the board. Chris, are you still on and available?
I am.
And Chris, you have submitted an affidavit today along with your findings of fact, and that has been submitted to this board?
I have.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements made in those documents?
Yes, it would.
Thanks, Chris. Next, I'd like to call Dan Ackroyd with seven eleven.
Yes.
Mr. Ackroyd, have you submitted an affidavit today along with the findings of fact to this board?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements made in those documents?
Yes.
Thank you. And Peter, last but not least, did you prepare an expert report that was submitted in connection with the findings of fact to this board?
Yes, I did.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with your findings and conclusions contained in your expert reports submitted to this board?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for our case in chief. We'd certainly be happy to answer questions of the board.
Great. Any questions from the board on the what we're viewing, which is the special use? Okay, we've got enough on this one. So we'll take this under consideration, and I thank everyone for their time.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to calendar number three seventy-nine dash twenty-one dash Z at twenty-one oh four North Fremont Street. I want to amend the agenda on the record. The agenda reads twenty-one oh four West Fremont Street. It really is twenty-one North Fremont Street. So Agnes or Mark, let us know when you're here. Agnes, I think you're on mute.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, this this will be mine. Mark Kupiak here.
Great.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, I'm good. Can you hear me, Mark?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much. And for the record, my name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney with offices at seventy-seven West Washington, and I replicate it. And on this case, I have with me today, I've got my associate Agnes Plekum. On behalf of the applicant, I've got Brent Batts. Brent is a beneficiary of the land trust, and he and his wife own the subject property. We also have John Hannah of Hannah Architects, the project architect. And hopefully, I believe John has called in, so I hope they've recognized his phone number. But those would be our witnesses.
Great. Do you want me to get them sworn in, Mark? One one swoop?
Sure.
Perfect. Okay. So first up, Brent Batts, will you please state your name and address?
My name is Brent Batts, delivered twenty-one oh four North Fremont, Chicago, six oh six one four.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to do swear affirm to speak the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, perfect. And then Eliana Batts, will you please state your name and address as well?
Eliana Batts, two one zero four North Fremont, six oh six one four, Chicago, Illinois.
Great, thank you very much, ma'am. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Wonderful. John Hannah, I don't know that we've seen you today. I know we've heard your name, but let's get you sworn in. So John, will you state your name and address, please? Let's see, Mark, is John on?
I do see him that there within the phone number at the very bottom, John Hannah, thirty-five. Hopefully, he could unmute himself with the telephone.
Yeah, come on, would you remind us, how do we unmute with the telephone?
Telephone is star six, but he's not calling from the phone. He's on his computer. Okay. Had him unmuted just for a second, and then he muted himself back.
Not good.
We'll get him. Mark, could you say, will Natalie begin to be on as well?
I'm sorry, say again, Mr. Chairman?
Will Natalie begin to be a witness as well?
Mr. Chairman, John is the architect. Actually, Natalie is a structural engineer. And we she's been consulted in this matter. She was not able to join us today.
That's right.
Just in the future deadline, I disclosed her by Monday, just in the event that she would be available. But I don't think I don't think she'd be necessary. I think Hannah could answer all the questions if we could get them.
Yeah, John, or I'm just trying to buy some time. John, are you on?
He just left. I think he's going to join through.
Unfortunately, I have the next case, and he is the architect on the on the next case also, so.
It's fine. We'll give him a few minutes. He he knows the drill.
Well, exactly.
I'm sure it's I'm sure it's internet issues, which I have also had today, so I cannot.
Actually, Chairman, he's he's.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, John, we can hear you. Hey, okay, good. Yeah, John, will you please state your name and address?
John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, licensed architect, State of Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Awesome. Appreciate it, John.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, just a little overview. It's one case. It's we're asking for variations of side setbacks. And it is for proposed rear addition to an existing building. The property is improved with an old owner occupied, single family home. This property with the house is in the Fremont Row House District, the Chicago Landmark District. So, of course, the owner is constrained about what he could do with the property, can't demolish it. And any addition has to be done in a way not visible from the street. So the solution is this rear addition. Another unique feature we have in addition to landmarks is that this is a row house. This and the buildings adjacent on their block. And of course, these old row houses are built without side setbacks. And the proposal is for the rear addition to follow the walls of the existing building in the front. And of course, in order to do that, we would need a variation for these side setbacks. Another unique feature is that the lot is only twenty-two feet wide. So the addition, if we were to actually provide a combined side setbacks of four point four feet, then obviously, we'd have a much more narrow addition, really about seventeen point six feet wide, which would be a disadvantage to the owner because you'd have a much worse floor plan for this addition. So those are your are unique circumstances that they'll testify to. And just to confirm, we did submit materials here by your deadline. And we did submit two letters of support from the two adjacent next door neighbors. We also sent a series of pictures about similar rear additions on the block and in the neighborhood. And I will note, some of those rear additions were built with resolutions issued by this board, specifically twenty-one oh eight, twenty-one forty, twenty-one forty-one North Fremont. And our next door neighbor, twenty-one oh two, a prior owner, had got zoning relief when he built his addition. Back then, in nineteen ninety-eight, they allowed him to get an exception to reduce those side setbacks to build his addition. So they'll testify, we're not going to change the character of the neighborhood with this addition. So with that, my first witness, Brent Batts. Brent, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Would you state your name and your address?
My name is Brent Batts, delivered twenty-one oh four North Fremont, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one four.
Okay, you're one of the owners of the subject property?
That's correct.
And who owns that property with you?
My wife, Eliana, who's sitting next to me.
Good. You live in the property?
Yes, we do.
And who all lives in the property with you?
Me, my wife, and my daughter.
Good. And Brent, was I correct, this is an old house located in this Fremont Landmark District?
It's good.
Also true, this old house is small in relation to your current space needs, and not big enough for the family.
Yes, very much so.
So you need to build an addition, correct? Because of the restrictions of landmark, the only allowable addition was this rear addition, correct?
Correct.
And this rear addition does follow the walls of the existing building straight back?
Correct.
Was I also correct in saying your lot is a narrow lot at twenty-two feet wide?
Yes, it is.
If, as I said, you were to provide four point four feet combined setbacks, that would substantially narrow this addition, correct?
Absolutely. It would keep us from being able to put a extension on the second floor for a better amount of bathroom. We would have to move the bathroom forward in the house and rip up some existing space. And then I think on the first floor, we'd probably have to open up the back wall or trying to maintain kind of the, you know, historical nature of the house and preserve it as much as possible.
Okay, so that sounds like the narrow addition would not complement and not be compatible with the existing floor plan in the existing house.
Absolutely.
And that's why you're asking for this variation. Brent, was I correct that you reached out to talk to your neighbors about this project?
Yes, you are.
And specifically, you talked to the two next door neighbors?
Absolutely.
And you've got a letter of support from each of those two next door neighbors? And, Mr. Chairman, we did forward those letters to you. And actually, we have also been in contact with the Alderman's office during this procedure, and we made those letters available to her also. Brent, is it true you signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
If I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have from Brent, unless you had questions.
I think maybe we take questions after all the witnesses are on.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have his wife present. I do believe her answers would pretty much be consistent with Brent, so probably no need to put it on for duplication. But she's certainly available for questions if someone had one.
Okay, cool. We'll do that at the end as well.
Okay. Next, I call John Hannah. John, you there?
I'm here.
John, state your name and your address.
John Hannah, President Hannah, Inc., one eighty, Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, John, was I correct that this property improved with this house is in that Fremont Avenue Landmark District?
Correct.
Also true, because of that, the owner cannot demolish and rebuild the house?
That's true.
Also, any addition cannot be visible from the street?
Correct.
So the only spot for the addition is in the rear, is the rear where you've planned it?
That's true.
Because of the landmark district, your permit process does need landmark review and approval?
Correct.
And you've been before the landmark permit review committee?
Correct.
And they've approved the plans and stamped their approval on those plans?
That's true.
And, Mr. Chairman, we've submitted those stamp plans with the our materials. And actually, we also made those stamp plans available to the Alderman at her request. Okay, so, John, true that the existing building is a row house built lot line to lot line with no side setbacks?
Correct.
And this rear addition, as you planned it, merely follows the wall of the existing building straight back?
That's true.
And this lot at twenty-two feet wide is, in fact, a narrow lot?
Yes, it is.
So if, in fact, you were to provide those setbacks and do an addition only about seventeen point six feet wide, that would affect the floor plan for the owner?
It would.
And actually, come up with a floor plan that would be less desirable and less suitable for his needs, as he's articulated.
That is also true.
Okay. John, you're familiar with that neighborhood. There are other buildings on the block and nearby that have similar rear additions?
That's true.
And as I described, some of the materials we submitted, rear additions with outside with outside setbacks?
Correct.
As a result, in your opinion, this variation of brand is a true, it would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
It would not.
And you signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes, I did.
And if I continue to quiz you, your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions.
Yeah, I one question that comes to mind, and then board members may have some as well. So if we go to the photo of the rear really quick, we'll see if it gets there. So the rear photograph, so, yep, that one. Just to confirm, I see it from. It's cracked.
Who's best answer today, John, you or Brent?
Well, it's true. John Hannah here. We would not we not go any farther than those neighbors' buildings.
Okay. And you mentioned some conversations with the older woman. Was there ever a I know she voiced support. Was there ever an official letter or resolution with her?
There was not. We notified her of the filing. We notified her of the hearing. We sent her the press. We further sent her the stamp plan stamped by the Landmark Division. And after Brent got the letters of support from the two next door neighbors, we furnished her those letters, which she was interested in. But there was no, and just so you know, her her regular staff person Joanna, who'd been with her for years, actually has left the office recently. So we actually were dealing with two different staff people. So we were trying to merely answer her questions and keep her advised of our progress.
Okay, got it. And she just she just didn't send a letter?
Correct.
Other questions from the board?
Hi, this is Jolene Saul, calling up on the chairman's question. It looks like if you extend it, block one of your neighbor's windows. Is that correct? And are they okay with that?
Yes, they are.
Who, John or Brent, who will take that?
I've spoken to them, and I've offered to pay the expenses of closing the windows for them, and they've they've signed the letters.
Great, thank you.
Understanding that they weren't legal to begin with.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor or Commissioner McDonald. I think I heard you.
See, I'm sorry to sorry to jump in. I didn't realize you weren't finished speaking. This is for attorney Kupick. Are you making an argument or presenting information about whether the property could yield a reasonable return if this use isn't permitted?
Well, Commissioner, good good question. And of course, the the ordinance has drafted and the rules has drafted with a reasonable rate of return is easier to address in a developer situation who's building a project for resale. So it's easy for him to compute his profit with and without the relief. If I could revisit Brent, Brent, are you still on the call?
Yes, I am.
Brent, do you feel, in your opinion, and and tell us again, how long have you lived in the house?
We moved in in December two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, so Brent, is it your opinion, and you're doing this to increase living space so you could continue to live in this house, right?
Yes, purely for family reasons.
Exactly, not because you have plans to resell the house. So based on your experience in the houses, your opinion, that you need this variation in order to reasonably enjoy this house?
Yes, we do.
Especially in view of the fact that it's a landmark district, you're actually very restricted as far as how you do this addition. Cannot build up taller. You've got to not be visible. So it's a real hardship for you as a property owner to be in this landmark district and try to build an addition.
Yes, it is. And I think if we didn't get it, we would only really have two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and an office in the upstairs. And I think the neighborhood really desires three bedrooms and two bathrooms if we were to resell the house in ten fifteen years.
And Brent, your plans for this 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 addition, it's going to be expensive, and you're going to invest a lot of money to improve this building, correct?
Yeah, yes, it will be.
And if you have to sell this house someday, you'd like to be able to recover that investment.
Correct.
So again, just as you said, your conversation with realtors, you're trying to have an addition that'll actually provide a house that would be popular with buyers someday if if you chose to resell.
Yes, it's it's a family neighborhood, and people usually want more than two bedrooms.
Right. And you have a fear, and actually, you submitted an exhibit to suggest that if you did not get the variation and you were forced to build that narrow rear addition, you'd have a similar expense, and your expectation would be that it would sell for a lot less because the narrow addition would have the bad floor plan.
I do believe so. And, you know, it's easier to build new and put the plumbing and the electricity in than it is to tear out an existing bedroom, bring the plumbing from the north side of the house over to the bedroom and retrofit a one hundred and thirty plus year old home.
Right.
That's the easiest.
So you feel that you do need to need this variation so that you could realize a reasonable return someday if you choose to sell this house?
Yes, it's my belief that we'd get less square footage at more cost.
Thank you. Is that the answer, Commissioner?
Yeah, I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Sure. Now, my pleasure. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? All right, we will take this under consideration. We've got everything we need. So I thank everyone for your time.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on. Let's go to calendar number three eighty dash twenty-one dash Z. And I understand that we still will be joined by Mark Kupiak. Mark, go ahead and and started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this property, fourteen oh one West Superior Street. And actually, it's a corner property, also the corner of Superior and Noble. My name is Mark Kupiak. I'm the attorney for the applicants. My office is seventy-seven West Washington. And for this particular case, we have, I know we have Sonia Ospina on the call. She and her husband Henry are co-owners of the subject property. We do also have John Hannah, who, as a project architect, is is involved. And we also, I think we have, I don't know if I see him, we had asked Jimmy Banis, the proposed buyer of the side lot, to join us. I don't know if he has. But if he if he's here, he'll he may he may have some responses if you have questions. So that's our team. And my associate Agnes Plekka also assisted.
Okay, great. Do you want me to get everyone sworn in, Mark?
Sure.
Okay, so first up, Ms. Sonia Ospina, will you please state your name and address?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
My name is Sonia Ospina. I reside at ninety-nine East Avenue, Park Ridge, Illinois, six. Uh, my name is Sonia Ospina. I reside at ninety-nine East Avenue in Park Ridge, Illinois, six zero zero six eight.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, do we have Henry Ospina as well?
Uh, he's sitting right next to me. I don't know if you can see him.
Yeah, great, great. Thank you. Henry, will you state your name and address as well?
Ninety-nine East Avenue.
Your name.
Henry Ospina. Ninety-nine East Avenue, Park Ridge, Illinois, six zero zero six eight.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yeah.
Thank you. And, um, John Hannah has been sworn in, um, already, so he remains sworn. Um, and then we've got, uh, Zila Abanis, and I'm sure I'm saying the name incorrectly, but Mark, did you say, um, will they be joining?
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, we, we invited him. His nickname is Jimmy, usually goes by Jimmy.
That's why I was confused. Okay.
That's how people know. And to be honest, uh, I, I, I asked him to join us merely to describe the community review process. And actually, I think Mr. Hannah could help us with that. So if he's not on the call, I think we could proceed without him.
Yep, go right ahead.
Good. All right. So we've got, uh, one case for this property on Superior Street. And what we have is, and this is the zoning department determination that this is a division of an improved zoning lot. Even though the sellers thought they had two separate lots all these years, two separate lots, separate lot numbers, separate pin numbers. The zoning department says because of the common ownership, uh, it's one zoning lot. So in dividing the zoning lot, they gave them a laundry list of things that they had to do. Uh, and this variation is the last item on the list. But to be very clear, we've got two lots. There's an old build, beautiful old building at fourteen oh two West Superior Street. And it's hard to see with the trees, but adjacent there is a side lot right on the corner. And the plan is for the Ospinas to, uh, keep ownership of the building and sell off the side lot to Mr. Bannas. And he would build a new residential building on the, uh, on the side lot. Uh, we're here before you for zoning relief for the existing building. And the, uh, the existing building sits on one of the lots. The principal building. And the little quirk is we need the variation for the building. But the reason we need a variation is actually not for the wall of the building, but the fact that the existing building toward the front of that building has bay windows on the upper floors. And actually, the bay windows extend to the property line. So they are correct. We, we've got a zero setback where the bay windows meet the property line. But I wanted to emphasize that the wall of the building itself is setback almost three feet from that property line. And there is a little sidewalk or gangway, however you would, uh, describe it, that goes underneath the bay windows. So the building itself is not on the lot line. So please don't be misled by the zero setback that is for the bay windows. And maybe most importantly, the buyer, Mr. Bannas, and Mr. Hannah described the plan, he's going to build a building that complies with all the zoning setbacks. So he's not asking for any relief for his building. Uh, and, and he's just there to, uh, help us explain the procedure that he went through to get to this point today. So, and then we're also going to testify that another unique feature, uh, in addition to this thing about the bay windows, every other lot on the block is improved with a principal residential building. Subject property are the only two lots that are not. So by building the new building on the side lot will really conform with the historic development pattern in the block. And number two, we did give you a streetscape and you can see the other buildings on that block, they are not, uh, not showing a big side setback uh, uh, for any of those buildings. As a matter of fact, some of those buildings are right on the property line with a zero side setback. So we're not going to change the character of the neighborhood with this, with this variation. And then I'll also mention, uh, Sonia did in fact talk to her neighbors, got seven letters of support, and we've submitted those letters of support with our materials. So that's our overview. With that, I would call Sonia Ospina. Sonia?
Yes, I'm here.
You there? Okay. State your name and your address.
Sonia Ospina, ninety-nine East Avenue, Park Ridge, Illinois, six zero zero six eight.
And you're one of the owners of this property along?
Together with my husband, yes.
And did I say correctly, the property consists of two lots, actually two separate lots with separate PIN numbers and separate lot numbers?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. And when did you buy this house? How long ago?
Twenty-three years ago.
All right. And actually, at that time, at the closing, you noticed from the survey and the legal description that the lots did have separate lot numbers and the survey showed separate lot numbers and of course, separate real estate tax numbers, correct?
We always assumed that it was two pieces and the lady we purchased them from, who was my friend, um, because I lived and worked across the street for many years in that neighborhood, um, also thought that they were two separate pieces, they have two separate PIN numbers. And it took us by surprise when we tried to market the property and got an offer from Jimmy that, um, we had to jump through all these hoops.
Okay. So this was always your dream to sell off the side lot?
Well, let's say that at seventy-five years old, it would secure my, um, retirement years.
All right, thank you. And you've paid two separate tax bills all these years?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Um, so Sonia, is it true that Jimmy advised you that he was advised that he, in order to divide these, the zoning lot, as the city described it, he needed to rezone the property in order to do that?
Yes, yes.
And you signed papers consenting to that rezoning?
Absolutely.
Okay. And Alderman Burnett asked him to go to the Eckerd Park Community Association?
Yes, and he did more than once. He met with them, reviewed his plans at their request. And I think he met all their requirements.
Good. And at the end of that process, the alderman did support a zoning change in the city council for this project?
Yes, Alderman Burnett, that's also in favor of the project.
Okay, uh, but however, we still need the variation because of the side setback issue, correct?
I understand, yes.
And am I correct to say that you do have bay windows on the east side of your building on the upper floors?
Yes, second and third floor.
Okay. But am I also correct that there is a sidewalk or a gangway underneath those bay windows?
Yes, there's always been a gangway, um, approximately three feet wide.
Good. So you're building this setback about three feet from that side property line?
Yes.
Uh, Sonia, also true that, uh, except for your property, all the other lots on this block are improved with a separate residential building?
Yes, that's a very dense neighborhood. Actually, there are buildings that have no, no separation at all, that are wall to wall.
And again, side setbacks are not a feature of buildings on this block. These buildings are close together.
No, they're not. You're right.
Good. So Sonia, in your opinion, if the board grants this variation, it's not going to change the character of this block?
No, not at all.
Sonia, did you sign an affidavit in connection with your testimony today?
Yes, I did.
We submitted on your behalf. And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with the affidavit?
Yes, they will.
Good. That's all I have of Sonia? If no questions, I'd call John Hannah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, John. Name and address?
John Hannah, uh, president of Hannah Architects Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
Good. And John, am I correct in assuming, uh, you're the architect for Mr. Bannas who proposes to buy this side lot?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, good. And so, uh, again, we're, we're talking about the two lots, the existing old building at fourteen oh two and the adjacent side lot on the corner, correct?
Correct.
And again, the very, the relief we're asking for here with the variation for the, uh, side setbacks uh, deals primarily with the east side of that building?
Correct.
And it's true that visually there's a couple of bay windows on the east side?
Correct.
And the zoning, the usual measurement is to the farthest part of the building where it extends. So they measure to the end of those bay windows.
Correct.
But those bay windows are only on the upper floors, not on the first floor?
Also correct.
Okay, so this building is not on the lot line merely the bay windows?
That's true.
Uh, John, with respect to the new building, we don't have Mr. Bannas here, but you're familiar with the plans for the new building, correct?
Yes, I am.
Good. And the plans for the new building show the building in compliance with all the zoning code and all the bulk requirements and all setbacks?
That is true.
So we're not asking for any relief for the new building?
We are not.
Uh, also true, in order to divide this improved zoning lot, zoning department said the zoning change was needed?
Correct.
And were you involved with the community process with Mr. Bannas and the Eckerd Park Association?
Well, we were.
Good. And obviously, you went through that process and got the support of Eckerd Park?
Eventually, yes.
Eventually. And after that, Alderman Burnett supported the zoning change in the city council?
He did.
And that zoning change was done as a type one application with plans attached?
Correct.
So Mr. Bannas will be constrained to actually build as per those plans, again, showing the required setbacks?
That's correct.
And John, true, the other buildings on the block, each building is improved with a separate residential building?
Correct.
And also true that side setbacks are really not a feature of buildings on this particular block?
That's true.
Buildings are quite close together and a couple of buildings right on the lot line.
That's true.
So based on that, this variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
Correct.
And John, you signed an affidavit in connection with this case today?
I did.
And if I continue to question you, your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
They would.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have unless there are questions.
Thank you. Um, yeah, any questions from the board? Okay, we've got everything we need here. So thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Let's go right into, um, the next two, which are calendar numbers three eighty-one dash twenty-one dash Z, eighty-two dash twenty-one dash Z, both at twenty-four thirteen West Belden.
And Mr. Chairman, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, and Counselor, thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, um, Commissioners. My name is Agnes Pleka. I'm an attorney with the Office of Mark Kupiak and Associates located seventy-seven West Washington, Chicago. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant and the owner of the property, David Bolick. Uh, hopefully, I am joined by David and also by the project architect Mario Cruz. If you would like to swear them in, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, perfect. Um, so first up, uh, David Bolick, will you state your name and address, please?
David, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Um, yeah, thank you. So David, will you state your name and address, please?
Absolutely. Uh, David Bolick, twenty-four thirteen West Belden, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Great. Okay, so next up, uh, Mario Cruz, will you state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Mario Cruz, uh, twenty-four fifty West Division Street, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six twenty-two. I'm the nicest table license attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, awesome. Go right ahead, Agnes.
All right. And, uh, by way of short summary, the subject property is uniquely located at the end of the block. And it is bordered by two public alleys, one along its rear property line and one along its east property line. It is improved with an existing residential building with two dwelling units, uh, which was built more than hundred years ago. Uh, the building currently has a non-conforming floor area and, uh, non-conforming height. And there is an existing older small dormer on the east side of about eighty-five square feet. And recently, when the applicant was inquiring about a possible permit for a garage, he learned that that, uh, dormer was built without a proper permit. So he is here today to, to rectify this situation. And in order to get that permit for the existing dormer, the applicant is seeking two variations. So number one, floor area ratio. Uh, we are seeking to increase the existing floor area forty-seven seventy-six square feet by one point seven percent to allow an account for that additional eighty-five square feet. And the hardship for this variation, Mr. Chairman, is, is threefold. Number one, we have an existing non-conforming building. We have a non-conforming height, non-conforming, uh, floor area. Uh, so that's, that's, uh, accounts for the site planning hardship. Number two, we have a short lot. We have a substandard lot of only hundred and eight, uh, feet, which by its math is decreases or, 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 uh, makes our maximum allowable floor area less than what a standard, uh, lot would yield. And number three, unique circumstances is that we have a tall basement which counts against the maximum allowable floor area. So even though the existing, uh, basement is, is not habitable, it only has some storage, it is counted against that maximum allowable floor area. So that's variation number one. Uh, variation number two, height. Uh, the dormer actually does not increase the overall height of the building. However, it changes how the zoning height is measured. So in order to comply with the technical requirement, we need that variation of ten percent. So yes, yes. And with that.
Counselor, real quick, just to let you know, your sound is getting a little bit muffled. So I want to make sure it's clear.
Absolutely. Let me just increase the. Okay. All right. So with that, I'd like to call Mario Cruz as my first speaker. Mario, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Mario Cruz, twenty-four fifty West Division Street, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six two two.
And you were retained by, uh, David to prepare plans and obtain permit for the existing dormer?
That's correct, yes.
Existing hundred-year-old building, existing non-conforming, uh, floor area, existing non-conforming height, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So you had, uh, you were faced with, uh, uh, particular hardships in terms of, uh, uh, trying to comply with the FAR and height requirements under the existing.
Yes.
And because of those non, uh, existing non-conformities, it is not possible to design a dormer which could comply.
Hey, Counselor, sorry to interrupt again. There's like some weird feedback, motion, muffling.
I think, uh, Chairman, there's some paper or something covering, uh, perhaps her microphone.
So maybe it's, and it could be that, uh, there's other people on that aren't muted. So like, if, so if you're not Counselor or Mario, um, just make sure you're muted.
You hear me now?
Yep, yep.
Okay, good.
All right. Uh, should I proceed? Okay, sorry about that. Um, all right, so it is not possible to design a dormer for this building in strict compliance with both height and FAR requirements, correct, Mario?
Yes.
Okay. However, the dormer strictly complies with all the setbacks. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, was I correct when I said that, uh, the existing dormer doesn't really increase the overall height of the building?
That's correct.
Okay, and the variation for the FAR is only one point seven increase, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, since these variations promote preservation and rehab of an older existing building, is it your opinion that these variations are consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, and Mario, also, uh, this property is located in the northwest additional dwelling unit area, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that area was established by city council to increase the supply of housing while maintaining uh, neighborhood character without significant changes to the building, right?
Yes.
So actually, the, the existing dormer, the small dormer, is in the spirit of that new ADU ordinance, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And since the dormer is complying with all the setbacks, it will not impair uh, adequate light or air to the adjacent property owners?
That's correct.
And actually, it's, it's on the alley, so we have only one adjacent, uh, uh, immediate neighbor, and it's on the other side where, where the dormer is not, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And we have on-site parking, so there's, this is not going to be any different and any increase in congestion in the public street.
That's correct.
Right. So you signed the affidavit, uh, which contained all your, uh, testimony and statements, uh, for the criteria of this variation?
Yes.
So if I continue to question you, will your testimony be consistent with those statements contained in your affidavit?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so that's all that I have of Mario. David? Are you on?
Yes.
All right, state your name and address for the record.
David Bolick, twenty-four thirteen West Belden, Chicago, Illinois. David Bolick, twenty-four thirteen West Belden, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
All right. And you've lived at the property with your family for more than twenty years?
Uh, yeah, yes.
And you and your wife and your children occupy the upper unit?
Yes, one, one door.
Right. And the lower unit, the ground floor unit, is also occupied by your family, namely sister-in-law?
Yes, and my nephew, yeah.
Okay. And you, when you recently applied for a garage permit, you learned that that old dormer did not have a proper permit, right?
Yeah, I was totally surprised. I didn't...
And without the proposed variations, the existing dormer would have to be actually demolished and the roof replaced?
Gosh, what not?
And the dormer provides crucial living space for the upper unit, right? That's where you have the bathroom and especially headroom for the child.
Room, yeah.
So preserving the existing dormer in its current location is essential for your, for your family?
Yes.
And if the proposed variations are not granted, you will not be able to make a reasonable return on your investment over the years, right?
Correct.
Okay. And just to briefly, again, you're gonna continue living in the property, so, and you're not a developer. The property is not for immediate resale, so the regular profit margin analysis doesn't apply here. But you are estimating your costs. So you spent five, two hundred thousand to purchase the property, right?
Yes.
You spent about hundred and fifty over the years for the repairs and maintenance?
Yeah, yes.
And additional about two hundred thousand for loan interest and real estate taxes?
Correct.
So it is essential for you to be able to keep the existing dormer with a proper permit, of course, and be able to not only have the extra living area, but at some point be able to sell it if you need it with a reasonable return, right?
Yes, correct.
Now, if you cannot keep the dormer, if these variations are not granted, your experts were telling you that you would have to spend additional ninety thousand to replace the roof, to remove the dormer, correct?
Yeah, yes.
And, and of course, since you would be removing the additional living space, the purchase price would be much less, so you would not be able to recuperate your loss.
Absolutely, correct.
Okay. And you've lived at the property for many years? You've talked to your neighbors? Nobody objects in terms of keeping the dormer?
No, nobody objects there.
And we also notified Alderman, and they also didn't voice any objections to preserve the status quo?
Correct.
Okay. And we actually found two variations nearby for similar additions. And Mr. Chairman, I did submit those variations prior to the deadline. So the proposed variations and the existing dormer will not change the essential character. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And the dormer is not visible from the street. It's only visible from the east side alley, right?
Correct.
Okay. And David, you signed the affidavit, which contained your statements for today's hearing in support of the variations criteria?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you, will your testimony be consistent with your statements?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, that is all that I have for my witnesses. If there are any questions?
Hey, let's see. Any questions from the board? Okay, we've got enough on this one. So, and I think we've gotten everyone on, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it then?
Yes. Yep, that, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks for coming. And Agnes, I know, or Counselor, I know we have a couple
Yes.
More with you. So I just want to stress to you that, you know, we've got the findings of fact. So the running through of all the elements we have might just not be in the interest of time.
Sounds good.
Thanks. All right. So let's move along to calendar numbers three eighty-three dash twenty-one dash S. And three eighty-four, sorry, this is just three eighty-one, right? Yep.
Worked, yeah.
Yep, just three eighty-three dash twenty-one dash S.
All right.
I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair beauty salon.
All right. Good afternoon again. For the record, my name is Agnes Pleka. I'm an attorney with Law Office of Mark Kupick and Associates located at seventy-seven West Washington, Chicago. And I am here on behalf of JPN Prof Nails, Inc., the applicant in this special use application before you. And I should today, Yulia Lutsiv, on behalf of the applicant, and Joe Ryan as our expert witness, if you would like to swear them in.
Perfect. Okay, so first up, Yulia Lutsiv, and apologies if I messed up the name pronunciation at all, but will you please state your name and address?
Yes, thank you. My name is Yulia Lutsiv. My address is twenty-two twenty-six West Chicago Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two two.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And Joe Ryan is sworn in and acknowledged for his expertise.
All right. So I would like to call Yulia as my first witness. Yulia, state your name and address for the record again?
Yulia Lutsiv, twenty-two twenty-six West Chicago Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two two.
And you are the president and sole shareholder there of JPN Prof Nails, Inc., which is the applicant in the special use?
Yes.
And Yulia, you've been working in a beauty salon for eight years, so you have a lot of experience in the personal service industry and also in managing such businesses, correct?
Yes, correct.
And you will personally manage this business at this location at eight fifty-two North Ashland Avenue?
Yes, right.
Okay. And you're familiar with the neighborhood, and you believe that there is unfulfilled demand for your proposed services?
Yes.
And your proposed hours of operation will be compatible with surrounding businesses, correct?
Yes.
And just for the record, would you please state your proposed hours of operation?
So we're gonna be open six days a week, from Monday till Friday, from nine AM till six AM, and also Saturday from nine AM till four PM.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to correct, I believe she meant to say Friday, Monday through Friday, from nine AM to six PM as opposed to AM?
Yes.
Got it.
All right. And you also propose to have seven workstations?
Yes.
Okay. And you've notified your neighbors and Alderman, and no one voiced any objections?
Yes.
And as a matter of fact, you were able to collect six letters of support from the adjacent property owners?
Yes, correct.
And Mr. Chairman, I submitted those letters prior to the deadline. And in regards to the ongoing pandemic, will you follow the CDC guidelines?
Yes.
Okay. And you signed the affidavit in support of this application, which stated your statements for criteria for the special use, correct?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you, your testimony will be consistent with the statements contained in your affidavit?
Yes.
Okay. Joe, state your name and address?
We've got his name and address. We're good. Joe, you can go right ahead.
All right. Joe, in preparation for this case, you inspected the property and surrounding neighborhood, and you have prepared a report, which I submitted to the board?
Yes, the report addressed all the criteria needed for this board to grant us special use for this salon.
So in your professional opinion, true that the proposed special use is, complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance?
Every one of them.
Good. And if I continue to question you, your testimony will be consistent with the statements contained in your report, correct?
It will, yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have for the witnesses in this case.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board for Ms. Lutsiv? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Ms. Lutsiv, thank you very much for coming in today.
Thank you.
We are now going to jump to calendar number three eighty-four dash twenty-one dash Z at thirty-five oh six North Keeler Avenue.
All right. Then once again, for the record, my name is Agnes Pleka. I'm an attorney with Law Office of Mark Kupick and Associates located at seventy-seven West Washington, Chicago. Oh, six North Keeler Avenue. I should have Ricardo and Eunice on the call, and also the project architect, John Hannah, if you'd like to swear them in, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, perfect. So first up, we've got Ricardo, Ricardo Soto is on, correct? Will you state your name and address? See. Mr. Soto, I think you're just on mute.
All right. Ricardo Soto, twenty-two fifty-three West Berwin Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six two five.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Eunice Sanchez, are you on as well?
Yes.
Thank you. And do you, will you state your name and address?
My name is Eunice Sanchez. My address is twenty-two fifty-three West Berwin, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two five.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you. And John Hannah has been sworn in and remains sworn.
All right. So very simply, Mr. Chairman, it's a fairly straightforward case. This property is a triangular-shaped vacant lot located at the end of the subject block. And the entire southwest border of the property runs along a public alley. So the property has only one immediate adjacent neighbor to the north. And the applicants intend to redevelop this vacant lot with their dream house. And the single-family house will have a basement, rear deck, and an attached two-car garage. And to accomplish this goal, they need variation to reduce the required south-side setback from seven point ninety-four to one point thirty-eight, with the north-side setback at three feet, for a total side setback combination reduced from nineteen point eighty-six to four point thirty-eight. And as this is a triangular-shaped lot, it has varying degrees of lot width and lot depth. And the property has a frontage of ninety-nine feet along Keeler Avenue, which invokes this large and unusual side setback combination requirement. But we also have substandard lot depth ranging anywhere from zero feet at the south tip of the triangle to hundred and eighteen feet along the north property line. And with that, I'd like to call John Hannah as my first witness.
John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
And John, because of the unique shape of this lot and due to the different widths and substandard depth of this lot, you were faced with the site planning and design challenges to fit a new house, which would meet the applicant's family needs, provide functional floor plan, and also be in strict compliance with all the bulk requirements, right?
Well, that's correct.
And you were able to design a house that strictly complies with the front, rear, and rear-open space, correct?
That's true.
It also strictly complies with the MLA and floor area ratio and maximum allowable height?
Uh, it does.
However, we do need that side setback variation to mitigate the site planning hardships for that triangular shape, correct?
That's correct.
And on the south-side setback, again, due to the triangular shape of the lot, the south-side setback along Keeler is actually twenty-nine feet, correct?
That's correct.
And then it gradually decreasing to one point thirty-eight feet at the most southwest corner of the house.
That's true.
So in your opinion, the proposed variations will certainly not impair any light or air to the adjacent property?
No, they will not. They will not.
Okay. And those particular hardships and, and site planning difficulties are due to unique shape and are not applicable to some other standard lots in an RS district, correct?
That's true.
Okay. And since this proposed single-family home has been designed to be compatible with other residential buildings, the proposed single-family home will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, correct?
No, it will not.
Okay. And John, you signed an affidavit in support of this case and in support of those variations?
I do.
And if I continue to question you, your testimony will be consistent with your statements contained in your affidavit?
Uh, that's true.
Okay. Ricardo?
Yes.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Ricardo Soto, twenty-two fifty-three West Berwin Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two five.
Okay. And you and your wife, you bought this vacant lot to redevelop it with your dream house, correct?
Yes.
And since this is a uniquely shaped lot, you had some site planning difficulties to fit a functional single-family home and be able to comply with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And without those proposed variations, the property basically remains unbuildable, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you do need those variations to be able to yield a reasonable rate of return on your investment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And again, you going to live at this subject property with your family? You're not a developer. You're not looking to build with a view to immediate resale of the property, correct?
Correct.
But you did some calculations, which we submitted to the board. So you estimated that if those proposed variations are granted, your estimated rate of return, if you needed to sell, would be around ten percent?
Correct.
Okay. And Ricardo, you talked to your neighbors, you talked to your adjacent neighbor, and you also talked to the Alderman?
Yes.
And you received support from everybody?
I have, yes.
And as a matter of fact, your adjacent neighbor to the north, as well as Alderman, the reporter, has provided you with their support letters?
They did, yes.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I did submit copies of those letters to the board. And Ricardo, you signed the affidavit, which contained your statements addressing all the criteria for these variations?
Yes.
So if I continue to question you, your testimony be consistent with the statements contained in the affidavit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have. I don't think we need to call on Eunice, but she's available if anybody has any questions.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board on this one? All right. We've got everything we need. We'll take this under consideration. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to do the calendar numbers three eighty-five dash twenty-one dash S and three eighty-six dash twenty-one dash C. Before I read the department's recommendation, I just want that we do have an objector on this matter, and I want to make sure that they are all good and signed in.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Mark Kupick here.
Sure.
We were not originally aware of Mr. Domingo's interest in the case.
Okay.
But earlier this week, when I found out that he did sign in, I reached out to him to ask him about his opinion on the case. And at his request, we had submitted cap de rendering. And he actually, if you see what the address he uses when he signs in, he's actually well beyond the two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, in market.
Well, he didn't get a notice, so he comes in at the last minute. So anyway, in the short time we had, we sent them the plans, we sent them the rendering, and our explanation that this is a particularly small site, only twenty-four feet wide, eighty-three deep.
Hey, Mark, I'm gonna cut you off. We're getting a little bit into the substance.
All right, fine, fine.
As you know, we happily take, and we happily take and encourage objectors. So let's get into it, into the case. So it looks like we've got Ed Domingo promoted, so good. I also see a hand from second staff. So Brian, go ahead and speak, not to the substance yet. We are not on the matter yet.
Thank you, Brian Pellrung, from Second Ward Staff, for the record. From what I understand, Mr. Domingo is withdrawing his objection, but if he has been promoted now, I'll let him speak himself. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Domingo, if you're on, if you can really just say, we don't want to hear on the substance of the objection. We just want to hear if you are. We just want to hear if you are still objecting.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, and I'm going to get you sworn in just because you're speaking. So will you state your name and address, please?
My name is Ed Tominga. Address is 2157 West Evergreen in Chicago, 60622.
Okay, thank you so much. And you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay. So it, are you, are you still planning to object on this matter?
No, I'm not. I, I retracted the objection. I came across this late in the, late in the process, and I had not much time to debate it with the committee. I'm, I'm chairman of the, the Wicker Park Planning Committee, which officially is called the Preservation and Development Committee. And we've got a, we've got a longstanding policy of objecting to resisting ground floor residential in the commercial and retail districts. So this, this kind of fit that. And so, in order to preserve the opportunity to object, I, I filed a, the speaking request with, as an objector. After, after ongoing conversations with the attorney and with the architect, and I got more informed about the, the circumstances of the, of the property and the constraints that were there. And it's vacant property and it deserves to be developed. I ended up concluding that, that residential, a two-unit residential building there would not be objectionable.
Okay. Okay, yeah, thank you. That's great. So just to confirm, you will be withdrawing your objection, correct?
That's correct. I submitted an email yesterday to Mr. Esip. I don't know if that made it on your desk or not.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, thank you for commenting and explaining to us. And just want to echo again, we, we really do encourage community input, especially in this virtual setting. So appreciate it. Very glad that everyone was able to educate each other ahead of time and will move forward without objector.
Correct.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to go back to reading the special use recommended. So this is for 385-21-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, two-dwelling unit residential building with an attached two-car garage, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout the plans and drawings stated September, September 10, 2021, prepared by Hannah Architects. And the side and rear facades of the building, as well as the attached garage, are made through. With count, with that, Counselor, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Kupiak, attorney for the applicant, my office, 77 West Washington. And Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I didn't realize Mr. Tominga was on the call. I saw yesterday, actually, that he had sent that email withdrawing. So I thought that, that was the withdrawal. So my apologies. Okay, the case overview, two cases. First case is a special use, and it'd be a special use to allow residential on the ground floor of the proposed building on this site. And as I prematurely started to mention, this particular site, one of the unique features is it's only 24 feet wide and only 83 feet deep, about 2,000 square feet. So the second case has to do with the 30-foot rear setback. And at 83 feet deep, it's quite a bit substandard. And they're now not able to comply with that 30-foot rear setback. So we're asking for a variation on that rear setback. So those are the two, two items of relief we're asking for. And just generally, again, the small site is a particular, unique circumstance and a particular problem for your, both the developer and the architect. This particular site is currently vacant. And just looking at the city records, an old demolition court case, the wrecking permit, et cetera, it appears that that wrecking permit was pulled back in 2011, 2012. So based on that, seems like it's been vacant a long time. And I suspect it's vacant because of the small size and the difficulty of doing a project if you had to do commercial on the ground floor. Hence, which is why we are, we are here asking for relief. Because the lot is so small, if you were going to provide commercial on the grounds floor, it would be a very small space. And at this stretch of Ashland Avenue, as we'll talk about, it just would not be commercially viable. And also, if you provided the commercial, it would restrict the size of your residential units above. So the whole project just would not work. As we'll testify, on this stretch of Ashland, there's still some old residential buildings. There's some old commercial buildings that appear to be converted to residential. There's empty storefronts. And even the existing businesses, it's a very auto-centric strip. You've got a, you, auto repair shop, you got a rim, tire and rim shop directly across the street from us. And then down the street at 1400 Ashland is the big shopping center, which has both Lowe's and Jewel as an anchor tenant. So to put a small commercial space at this location, the cute little store would just really be out of place at, at this location. So that's our idea on the special use. And again, the variation, it's really just a short lot at 83 feet. It's only 66% of a standard lot. And just too difficult to imagine. We submitted our materials. We submitted pictures, a variety of pictures of the residential buildings, the conversions, the empty storefronts. And we, and as we, as I told Mr. Tominga in our conversations, actually, the applicant did, tried to do extensive outreach, although he was dealing with immediate neighbors. And he talked to a number of people who live or have businesses in immediate vicinity. And we did submit 28, 28 letters of support from neighbors. And again, those neighbors are well aware of how long this lot has been vacant. And we also submitted our materials, our plans, letters of support to the alderman's office to advise him of what we were proposing. So with that, my first witness would be Dan Popovich. I would call Dan. Dan, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Dan, would you state your name and your address?
Dan Popovich, 524 Northwestern Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60612.
And Dan, are you a member manager of the 1520 North Ashland LLC?
Yes.
Great. And really quick, Dan, can you please swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, is it true your LLC has a contract to purchase the subject property?
Yes.
Contingent on the zoning approval?
That's correct.
Dan, am I correct that this, this isn't, in fact, a small site about 24 feet wide by 83 feet deep?
That's correct.
Only about 2,000 square feet of site area?
Yes.
And this has caused you a problem in trying to develop a viable proposal, viable development?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've determined that a small commercial space at this location would not be viable?
That's correct.
And you've done a survey of the surrounding area and the uses up and down Ashland?
Yes, there was 11 vacant properties within the two-block radius.
Okay, 11 vacant storefronts.
Commercial properties, that's correct.
Good. Dan, is it also true that there's still some old, old residential buildings still standing there on Ashland on this 1500 block?
Yes, we counted nine properties that were residential within the two-block radius.
Dan, also true, there's some old commercial buildings that look like the front facade has been altered and looks like they've been converted to a residential use?
Yes, that's correct.
Dan, also true, Ashland at this point is a four-lane divided highway?
Yes.
And also true that we have a lot of automobile-related uses at this stretch of Ashland? So there's an auto repair shop across the street that has three driveways?
There is a mechanic shop and a auto wheel shop, and they take up the entire opposite block of this street.
Good. Also true that there's a shopping center down the street at about 1400 Ashland with a Lowe's and a Jewel store?
Yes, that's correct.
So Dan, is it true? And, and tell me, Dan, what's, what's your experience with developing? You've developed other properties before, correct?
Uh, yes, been developing since 2002. We have developed a good number of properties in the area. We specialize in lead and sustainable projects. That's been several of our projects that were lead rated. So we have extensive experience.
Good. So based on your experience and your research, a cute little store at this location would not be viable?
The project with a commercial space requirement is financially not viable. It would, it would actually be a negative return.
Good. So however, you're going to do a two-unit building is what you proposed, and only two units because of the small site?
Yes, that's correct.
And you think there would be a demand for these residential units, especially of the size that you propose?
Yes.
And you think the design of this building will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area?
We try to design the best building we could.
Good. And then on the variation, as I said, lot's only 83 feet deep?
Yes, that's correct.
And your architect advised you, you had difficulty in providing a full 30-foot setback on a lot that's, that's short?
That's correct.
And Dan, it's true, you did two exhibits here with your calculation, your reasonable rate of return with and without the variation. And is it true to say in summary that you've concluded that you need the variation to get a reasonable rate of return for this project?
We cannot purchase the property and develop it without the approvals because it's not financially feasible. It's a negative return. It essentially loses money.
Good. And then also, this is a business-owned property on Ashland Avenue. So is it fair to say the buildings on this block, especially the short lots that they are, backyards are really not a feature of buildings on this block?
Yes, in our experience, most of the properties were almost up to the alley, actually.
Okay. And Dan, so based on your, your review of the buildings on the block, is it true that this variation for the rear setback, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
Yes.
And did you sign an affidavit in connection with this case here today?
Yes.
If I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have of Dan.
Okay, so who do you want to get to next, Counselor?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just one more question from Dan. Dan, you still there?
Yes.
Dan, is it true that you did an outreach to neighbors, people who live or people who own businesses in the vicinity of the subject property?
Yes, that's correct. We spent several occasions where we went door-to-door, every building, and talked to all the residents in the area.
Okay. Also true that you had 28, 28 of the people sign affidavits in support of this project?
That's correct.
And we submitted those affidavits to the board on your behalf. Okay.
I, the only thing I wanted to add, I think if it was different times and not COVID-restricted, I think we could have gotten more support.
Okay. And you were also in touch with the Chamber of Commerce, gave them your plans, told them what the proposal was, correct?
Yes, I stopped by. They provided me contact information to two different people. Garrett and Pamela, and I've emailed them, requested information.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, great. So it would be helpful, I think, you know, I know Brian from the alderman's office is on to speak on this, I believe. Brian, are you still there?
I am. No, I do not need to actually speak on this, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that opportunity. The alderman is not opposed to this.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thanks for, thanks for coming. So I think I'd like to hear a bit from, this would go to Joe Ryan, just on his view of the businesses in the area. Because I do understand that the adjacent properties, I believe, are functioning commercial businesses on the first floor.
Uh, we could go to Ryan. Joe, are you there?
I'm here.
State your name and your address, please.
Joe Spemrime, MAI, President of Sale Appraisal Group with offices 9455 South Wayne Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, did you do a written?
And Joe is sworn in.
Okay, good, thank you. Did you do a written report in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
Got your credentials as long, as well as some pictures and other materials to support the opinions you're going to express?
Yes.
Good. And Mr. Chairman, did you have a particular question of Joe? How should I approach this?
Yeah, so I guess I would just ask Joe directly if you could give your view on whether it, you know, would it be feasible to get ground floor retail in here? Because I know, I know there's a lot of vacancy in the area, but the two adjacent properties, I believe, have ground floor.
Uh, Chairman, they do have ground floor commercial uses. The problem, they had all the retail in the area experiences is that down on the 1400 block, there are two large groceries, grocery store and hardware store, home improvement store that have off-site parking and plentiful parking. So to put a res, uh, commercial use on the first floor, there's really limited parking in the area. It's, Ashland is divided, so it's not easy to walk across the street or to park across the street and walk over. As Mark said, most of the commercial in the area is auto-related, where they're pulling their cars into the facility rather than parking in the street. And they're, they're just, I, I appraise a ton of retail. And we do properties like this all the time, that the storefronts just struggle to find tenants that actually sell things. It's, it's, most of these are either office-related or personal service-related. And, and there's plenty of those uses available in the neighborhood, and they can't keep up. There's far too much supply and not enough demand. So to do a new project and to contribute even further would not be viable, in my opinion.
Okay. You know, if I may, since we do have Alderman Hopkins staff on, Brian, are you still on?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get your view, and you are sworn in. You, you're already sworn in, we did at the beginning. I believe that with your, your voice of support in this, can we assume that the alderman's office is saying that this will not change the character of the, of the street or surrounding or in any way mess up that landscape?
That's correct. It is Alderman Hopkins' opinion that, you know, as, as we've heard from a few of the witnesses here, there is a lot of ground floor retail, and too, too much, really, beyond the, beyond the demand that there is for it. And there's also a fair amount of other uses already on this block. There is ground floor residential. There is also auto-oriented. There's a mechanic shop across the street that has a driveway. The cars pull in, there's a tire shop as well. We're very familiar with this area personally, the staff, because Alderman Hopkins' office is on the next block in a, in a ground floor space. But we, we have parking in the back. This, this property does not necessarily have that option. So, yeah, it is, it is the alderman's opinion that this, this is a reasonable use of this space without, without ground floor retail.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me jump to you. So any, any other questions from the board for anyone who's spoken?
Mr. Chairman, could I finish with my examination, Mr. Ryan, though, before they take questions?
Oh, sure. Yeah, go right ahead.
Joe, you still there?
I am.
Joe, is it correct, again, we're talking about this stretch of Ashland Avenue, and as you mentioned, four-lane street, divided highway, because it's got those planners in the middle? Is it true that there's still some old frame residential buildings on this 1500 block of Ashland?
Yes, and I believe it's on the other side of the street. And, and they're, they're on, there, there are what appeared to be some converted storefronts into residential uses as well.
And you talk about those converted storefronts. It looks as if somebody had redone the front facade and perhaps changed or reduced the size of the windows on those buildings?
Yes.
So they no longer have the big plate glass window from the original storefront?
Right. And, and I didn't look in their beacon to see what they were doing, but they certainly appeared to be residential.
Exactly. But you certainly could not look in as you would usually do if it was a business. Exactly. But you certainly could not look in as you would usually do if it was a business.
Right.
And you mentioned the vacant storefronts, correct?
Right.
And you, and you mentioned-
I counted twelve.
Very good, thank you. And you also mentioned, as the Alderman staff did, especially on the fifteen-hundred block of Ashland, the auto-related uses, the repair shop and the tire shop.
Right, which, which, which those uses aren't taking any parking because, you know, they're able to pull in. This use on that side of the street would have no parking and no parking in the rear.
Exactly. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. And you mentioned the shopping center down the street there with the Lowe's Home Improvement Store and the Jewel. That shopping center has a large parking lot, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, for what it's worth, I'd ask you to take judicial notice. The city website says that the planned development that approved that shopping center authorized two-hundred-ninety-five parking spaces. It authorized in excess of four-hundred-thousand square feet of gross site area and actually requires six, six loading docks. So just to give you some sense of the size of this shopping center that our property would be competing against if the applicant was forced to put a small, small commercial space at this location. So Joe, based on the foregoing, then, is your opinion that the special, special use complies with all applicable standards of the ordinance?
Yes.
That two residential units at this location would be in the interest of public convenience?
Yes.
That this special use would not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the community?
No.
And it is compatible with the character of the surrounding area?
Yes.
Good. And if I continue to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with your written report, which was submitted?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have of Joe.
Great. Any questions from the board?
And I do have Mr. Hannah, too, also signed it.
Right. Hold on. Any questions from the board?
Yeah.
Okay, so up to you if you want to get Mr. Hannah on. I don't think it's required for our purposes, so.
Understood. It was just a one small question. I'll, I'll keep it to a minimum, but he's got his affidavit. John Hannah, are you still on?
I am.
Okay. State your name and your address.
John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
And you're the project architect?
I am.
And John, just to zero in on this, you believe that this special use with the residential on the ground floor and your plan as shown on that rendering is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale, and project design?
It is.
And would you explain for the board just a little bit how you attempted to design the first floor of this building to be compatible with the storefronts that the chairman was referring to?
Right. You know, as we would typically do on, on a, on a main thoroughfare like this, we try to have as much glass on the ground floor as we can, just to, just to keep that character, that character going. So that it, it kind of looks like a store. So we're not turning, we're not snubbing the street. We're trying to try being keeping with the street.
Good. And you think with this design, that this building will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area?
Yes.
Yeah. And Joe Ryan mentioned that some of the old commercial buildings, it looks as if somebody had converted them from commercial to residential and changed those front windows?
It's true.
Okay. And generally, in your opinion, John, is that a bad look for the, a building on this stretch of Ashland Avenue?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not nice, you know. It's been happening, though.
Much better to design the building for residential use on the ground floor?
Correct.
Good. And John, just very briefly, a second case on the variation. It's a variation for the rear setback, is that correct?
Correct.
And your particular problem, your hardship, et cetera, is in fact a short lot at only eighty-three feet deep. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And John, you signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony?
I did.
And if we continue to question you, your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
They would.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Great. Any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a string of cases with Counselor Tyler Manick, and we're going to start at three-eighty-nine dash twenty-one dash S, three-ninety dash twenty-one dash Z to three-ninety-one dash twenty-one dash C. And when everyone gets situated, I'm going to go ahead and read the recognition from the Department of Planning and Development. This is for three-eighty-nine dash twenty-one dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed five-story, seven-dwelling unit building with attached seven-car garage with roof deck, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September thirteen, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by Three Sixty Design Studio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the, for the committee, my name is Tyler Manick, Ashane Banks, Kenyon Schwartz. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, one sixteen to eighteen Willard LLC. The applicant seeks to develop three and a half, a lot that was previously used as a three-and-a-half-story residential building with three dwelling units. The subject lot is only a hundred and ten feet in depth and has a irregular-shaped rear property line. The property is substandard in depth. The applicant seeks to construct a new five-story, seven-dwelling unit building with an attached seven-car garage. The building will contain a ground floor dwelling unit. In order to effectuate this programming, the applicant seeks a special use permit to allow for a dwelling unit on the ground floor level and variations to reduce the required rear setback from thirty feet to one-point-six feet and increase the allowable height from fifty feet to fifty-four and a half feet. The ground floor residential use requires a special permit here. As opined by the applicant's MAI appraiser, the location is not viable for a commercial use, and similar lots in the nearby vicinity on similar side streets have ground floor residential uses. As far as the rear setback, the, the rear setback relief only pertains to the ground floor in order to allow the attached parking. The remaining floors, two through five, will comply with the thirty-foot rear setback requirement. The height, the additional four-and-a-half feet of height that's requested here is necessary for the applicant to achieve a reasonable rate of return. The, the lot to the south was approved by the city for a hundred and twenty-four feet in height under a planned development, and the lot to the north was approved by the City of Chicago for a height of a hundred and twenty feet. So the height of fifty-four and a half feet is consistent with the area. In connection with this application, the applicant had met with Alderman Burnett, the neighbors of the West Loop Community Association, and the West Central Association, which is the local Chamber of Commerce for the West Loop, who have all expressed support for this project and the applicant's efforts to revitalize this location. Written confirmation of their support was submitted to the zoning board last week. With that in mind, Chairman, I'm going to call my first witness, Sabina Sorsa, if you don't mind swearing her in.
Absolutely. So Sabrina Sorsa, will you state your name and address, please?
Chairman, I don't see Sabrina Sorsa, and I also don't see Robert Link. He was supposed to be one of the witnesses.
I believe Robert links with Christopher Bame. They're architects in the same office.
Okay, I see one hand up. It's P L D Homes.
That's Sabina.
Oh.
Okay, so that's the applicant?
Correct. Okay, great.
Okay, once you can get unmuted, Ms. Sora, please state your name and address.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, hi. Sorry about these difficulties to join. My name is Sabina Sora, and I, my office is located at twenty-nine, twenty-nine North Lincoln Avenue, Suite One, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six, five seven.
Thank you very much. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Sabina, you are the owner of the applicant, correct?
That's correct.
And for this lot, you intend to construct a new five-story, seven-dwelling unit residential, residential building with attached seven-car garage, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the special use permit and the variations we're seeking here today are necessary in order to achieve that programming, correct?
Yes.
And you executed an affidavit that was submitted with the findings of fact for these applications, correct?
That's correct.
And you adopt as your testimony, or is the testimony you put in that affidavit true and correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today, the testimony you provided in those affidavits?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, standing on the findings of fact, I'll move to my next witness if anybody has questions for Sabina.
You know, that's great. I think we do the witnesses and then we'll go to questions.
Thank you. For our next witness, I would call Mr. Ryan.
And, and Joe Ryan has been sworn, as well as acknowledged, for his expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ryan, what was your scope, scope of assignment for the applicant in connection with this project?
To examine each of the criteria for this board to grant a special use, which I did.
And did you, did you prepare a report in connection with that assignment?
I did.
And is, was the report submitted with our findings of fact for this, these applications?
Yes.
And are the findings and conclusions you reached in that report true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today, the findings and conclusions that you made in that report?
I do.
And you also executed an affidavit that was submitted with the applicant's findings to fact, correct?
Yes.
And is that affidavit true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today, the testimony you provided in that affidavit?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, I would next call Christopher Bame.
Okay, great. Yep. Chris, we haven't had you yet today, I don't believe. So will you state your name and address?
Christopher Bame, forty-four fifty-three South Archer Avenue, Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Bame, you are an architect licensed with the state of Illinois, correct?
Yes.
And you're the architect of record for this project?
Yes, I am.
And you prepared the plans that are subject to these applications, correct?
My office did, yes.
And did you submit an affidavit? Or did you execute an affidavit that was submitted with the applicant's findings of fact?
Yes, I did.
And is the testimony you provided in that affidavit true and correct?
Yes, it is.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today, the test, the testimony you provided in that affidavit?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chairman, standing on the findings of fact and incorporating in this presentation, we're happy to answer any questions of the board.
All right, yep, questions from the board. I guess I would ask, because I, I know you had conversations with Alderman Burnett, you said, correct?
Correct. We sent the zoning board and the Department of Planning required it as a condition of their approval that the Alderman sign off on this project. So you have email confirmation.
Yep, okay. And, you know, behind the scenes on any of this, I just want to hear, like, engaging the community, was there ever any concern about, because it is, there, I know there's retail pretty adjacent to, to the lot. Was there any conversation on that or concern from the Alderman?
No, and we actually met with the Chamber of Commerce via Zoom, the West Central Association. They submitted their letter of support. All the, you know, this is the only building on this side street, or the only lot on this side street. The rest face Washington are ran off major commercial corridors, so they're not really applicable, and they recognize both the need for condos like this in the area to support those businesses and the lack of viability for any commercial traffic here.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? We'll take these under consideration. It sounds like we have everything we need.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. This is Tyler. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to calendar for three-ninety-two dash twenty-one dash Z at fifty-one fourteen South California Avenue. So Counselor Robert Martinez, let us know when you're on.
Hi, Attorney Martinez, on behalf of the applicant, may you please promote Jamarra Pasqual?
Yes, let's see.
I wanted to check, just in case you're not there, prepare to call him.
I'm sorry, what's the meaning? I didn't get that. Is it, is it Jeremiah Pasqualato?
That is it.
Okay, great. Okay, perfect. Counselor, does it look like we have everyone? Because I'd like to get, I, I see that there's a translator noted on here. So if you'll be using a translator, I'd like to get them sworn in first.
Absolutely. Me and Serber here will be the daughter of the applicant.
Great.
Aura.
Okay, great, so.
Aura, please state your name for the record.
It's Aura, A U R A Lopez.
Great. And Laura, will you please state your address as well?
Yeah, fifty-one fourteen South California Avenue.
Okay, wonderful. So we do these ones a little bit differently. I just want you to swear on the record that you will translate verbatim from, is the language Spanish?
Yes.
From English to Spanish and Spanish to English. So you'll state the questions directly to the applicant, who I believe is your father, as they've been stated by me, just in Spanish and vice versa.
Okay.
Okay, so can you just say, yes, I swear to that?
Yes, I swear to that.
Great, thank you so much. So then let's quick get your father sworn on, and is that Elias Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you. So Mr. Lopez, will you please state your name and address?
My name is Elias Lopez, fifty-one fourteen, California, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Si.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And thanks for that, Counselor. I know it's a little bit out of order. I'd just like to get the interpretation ones all, all set. So with that, you can carry on.
Mr. Lopez, please state your address for the record.
Fifty-one fourteen South California Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Chairman, please note that the red icon is not on the correct address. The subject premises is fifty-one fourteen. That's the next property, south.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Here, we are asking for a variation to reduce the rear setback and a variation for a side setback with an existing north side setback for a total of four-point-four feet and fifty-eight inches. Instead of the required nine feet, six inches, total combined to allow proposed carport and an eight-foot-high rolling gate in the rear. Here, this rolling gate is used for security purposes. As you can see, it has no effect on light or air that may pass through. There's demonstrated harsh- There's demonstrated hardship. Actually, I have to get back to my witness before I get to that.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Lopez, how long have you owned the subject property for?
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years. Do you have any intent to sell the property within the near future?
No.
No.
Okay. Do neighboring properties have the same non-conforming characteristics as shown here?
No.
Answer please.
No.
And is it true that my office prepared an affidavit and finding fact on your behalf? Thank you. Okay, so the concern is, you'll see the post on the left, it crosses over into beyond the setback requirements. However, there is a setback on the other side of four feet as shown on the plot of survey. So there's a means of egress. Additionally, this, obviously, there's an egress as to where the carport is, because the rolling fence opens and it serves as a security gate. There has been, it's quite a dense neighborhood, so most properties are multi-unit. Here, this is an oversized lot spanning at forty-eight inches by a hundred and twenty-five feet. With that, we note that there's an increased space for parking as four cars fit, and it's a single-family residential home. So in a way, this is benefiting the community. As I said, it's highly dense and it's very commercial. As fifty-first Street is developed with many businesses and restaurants that take up a lot of parking space. So here, the hardship is that my client has previously used this space for outdoor space with their daycare. Now, their daughter, who is also planning to open her own daycare at their home, plans to apply for her new license. However, it would be instrumental for her to have access to this outdoor space, especially given the concerns with being inside these days. Additionally, the security fence is needed because there's an issue with parking in this area, and I raised this with the Alderman, who is not in opposition to our application, and with that, they did not demonstrate any concerns. However, there have been instances of robberies, especially as people clean off the snow. And here, the family will be able to safely park the cars without having to worry about cleaning snow and just having easier access to the property. And since it's a single family with grown adults living there, it's an added benefit for them and the community. Now, I would like to swear in the project manager, Mr. Jeremiah Pasqualo.
Great, Mr. Pasqualato, are you on?
Yes.
Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Jeremiah Pasqualato, thirty-three-six North Drake Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six one eight.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Mr. Pasqualato, is it true that you are the project manager on behalf of the architect of record, Angela Borromeo?
Yes, Angelica.
Is it true that you have appeared before this board previously?
Yes.
Is it true that the premises cannot adhere to the zoning code without substantial modifications?
Yes.
Is it your professional opinion that it is not inconsistent that this be approved by the board?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
Yeah, so I guess, Counselor, a few, just a bit on history to start it off with, and then I'm sure the board will have some more, but was the applicant cited, or after they built without a permit, or what inspired the visit to us today?
They had to hire an architect. The applicant believed that they had hired a contractor who obtained a permit. Subsequent to that, some years later, they found out that they didn't, so they hired an architect. We received it now, and we're here before you today.
Okay, was it before that architect? So I'm just kind of confused, because I saw that it has had that denial in the past. Was it built after the denial?
I'm going to ask my client, and then just further ahead.
Okay.
He's asking if this was built after you were cited by the city, or you had noticed of this being a code violation. Oh, I shouldn't say talk in Spanish. Were you cited, or did you build it and then you were cited? He said it was built before he was cited.
Okay, okay. Questions from the board?
I'll ask a few questions. When was the carport built?
About four years ago.
About four years ago, and it was used for safety concerns at night, and during the day, it's been used for the daycare.
Who was the contractor that built it?
Just to confirm, was it, it was a contractor, though? It wasn't him?
Was it a contractor, or was it you who built it?
A contractor.
Do you know what the cost would be to tear it down?
He's not sure.
However, the cost may be substantial to them, as it has previously been used for daycare, and they would like to use it for daycare.
How much did you pay to have it built? Do you recall?
Around fourteen thousand.
When you had it built, did the contractor represent to you that he had obtained permits?
No.
No.
Did you ask the contractor if you needed a permit?
No.
No.
I think that's all I have.
And Counselor, maybe this question goes to you, but how would you describe in your words the hardship here? We've got to find some sort of hardship that wasn't self-created by the applicant, so I'm just going to ask it pretty directly.
Yes, of course. The hardship is the fear that has been instilled in the clients after numerous robberies within the area, especially in front of their house. There was a specific instance where someone was shoveling snow when they were attacked in front of the home. My client witnessed that, and because of that, that motivated them to create this additional space for security reasons. That's why they have the security gate as well. They also have adequate means of egress. On the other side, I mentioned that there is, as you'll see, a four-foot, over four feet of egress for exit and removal of the garbage. Additionally, the hardship is that the financial burden, my client's on a fixed income, and it would affect the viability of his daughter's business.
Okay, other questions from the board?
Let me just ask another question here. Would you agree that if you had to tear this down, that that would be a significant expense for you?
Yes.
And would that significant expense be a hardship for you? And would it be fair to say that when the carport was built, you did not know that you were building that in violation, or that the contractor was building it in violation of the zoning requirements?
He said that he doesn't believe it was a violation.
Right, yeah.
Is it that he doesn't believe, he didn't believe?
He said, "What's C?" So, yes. And then he said, "I didn't know it was a violation."
Okay, in the past, the way you phrased it, Counselor, made it think like he currently doesn't believe there was violation. So, just to clarify.
Yes, understood.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration, and thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, we are going to call a quick recess. Let's say that we'll meet back here at four oh five PM, so just over ten minutes. So for the recess, Commissioner Toyah seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I vote yes. Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
I vote yes too, so we'll see everyone at four oh five PM. Thanks. Okay, welcome back, everybody. I move that we reconvene this September 17th, 2021, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I vote yes as well, so we are back. And we're gonna go straight into the next, number 393-21-C. So, Counselor, um, sorry, and it's 394-21-C, so Counselor Tom Moore, let us know when you're ready.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm here. And hopefully, we have Rafael Vargas and his wife Andrea and his mom Felicia and their architect Gilbert. Gilbert is, um, was in, I think, Mississippi or someplace and is only able to join us on phone, I believe.
Phone, phone is totally fine, so let's, um, make sure everyone's on. So I see Andrea.
I think Rafael and Andrea would be together.
Okay, great. Then it's Gilbert and Felicita?
Can you hear me? This is Gilbert.
Great, okay. Thanks, Gilbert. Just give us a second. And then, um, Tom Felicita will be a witness as well?
I believe so, uh, she's, uh...
She's logged on, I'm not certain if, um, she's...
Oh, yeah, we're getting her promoted, I see.
Okay.
She has to accept to be promoted to a panelist.
Okay.
Would you like, would you like to swear, uh, any or all of these people?
Yeah, we can do that, I think it's efficient, so you don't have to repeat addresses. Um, so first up, Andrea Bellard, will you state your name and address, please?
Andrea Bellard, 1136 West Oakdale, Chicago, Illinois, 60657.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Absolutely.
Great, okay, so will you state your name and address as well?
Rafael Vargas, 1136 West Oakdale, Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Gilbert Levi, will you state your name and address and also your role?
Gilbert Levi, 336 West Florence Avenue, Suite 303, Chicago, Chicago. Record.
I missed that last part, what was? Okay, great, thank you so much. Um, and then Felicita Vargas, uh, will you state your name and address and role?
She needs to unmute.
Yeah, let's see. Oh, Felicita, you just need to unmute.
Hello, I'm back.
Great, so will you state your name and address and role on the project?
Felicita Vargas. 2133 North Second Street.
Is that in Chicago?
Philadelphia.
Philadelphia, okay. Um, and what is your role on the project, Ms. Vargas?
I'm not aware of the, the project.
Okay, Counselor?
Yeah, so the, um, the whole purpose of this is, um, Felicia is, um, Rafael's mother, and she lives in this house, uh, where we're asking for the variance six months of the year. And eventually, as you'll hear, as her MS progresses, um, rather than a nursing home, hopefully, she's going to live here permanently. Uh, and that's the whole purpose of it. Uh, but, uh, we thought would be, since she's really the moving purpose here, we thought would be helpful to have her in, involved.
Okay, um, I get it. So, Ms. Vargas, to the extent you do speak, um, we might not need you to for our purposes, but do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, may I proceed, Mr. Chairman? As you know, my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Rafael, will you tell the board who you are?
Uh, I'm Rafael Vargas, I am one of the co-owners of this property, 1136 West Oakdale.
And the property is, uh, built in 1906, is that right?
Correct.
And it has an existing old garage, um, that's also been there for a long time, is that right?
Correct, it's an old stable that was converted to a garage many, many years ago.
Okay, and, um, your mom Felicia, uh, lives with you, uh, approximately six months of the year, is that right?
Correct, during the, the better months of the year, she comes to visit us and the children, and then the idea is that she's eventually going to transition with us full-time.
And, uh, right now, she's, uh, with her brother in Philadelphia, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, we explain to the board what you're hoping to do here, um, with this variance.
Well, so first, you have to understand that my mother has had MS for about 25 years. So, what we need to do is we need to extend a catwalk over to the deck so that she can have some outdoor space with the children in, in the family. She's unable to do stairs, so that's why this particular plan has a catwalk as opposed to stairs. Um, the catwalk is actually coming off of our second floor, which is the main floor where she resides with us. If we don't have the catwalk, it requires her to go down 24 steps and somehow up another 24 steps to get up to the outdoor space. Um, she's unable to do steps, she's set essentially full-time in a walker and/or a wheelchair, unless we either carry her or assist her otherwise.
Okay, and so, when, when you bring, how do you get her to the second floor when she comes to stay with you?
So, when, when she initiates her time with us, essentially, we have to, both my wife and I, uh, or other, other persons, uh, either carry her or help her, one person behind her, one person in front of her, and you're talking about an endeavor that takes at least 20 minutes. Um, when she's upstairs with us, she's essentially not going anywhere, she's stuck on that floor for her time with us unless we have a, a real reason that we need to, uh, leave the premises. Um, and so, her ability to get up steps by herself is, is really an impossibility.
In this condition, uh, we have as an exhibit, um, a, a letter from her doctor, Jeffrey Greenstein. Um, and, and she has multiple sclerosis, as you said, and that's a debilitating, a, a, a progressive disease, is that right?
Correct.
So, so, so you expect, so your ultimate goal here is, as her condition over time gets worse, to avoid, uh, having her go to a nursing home and letting her live with you, is that right?
Absolutely, so right now, we split time because we want to also have her spend as much time with her siblings, my uncle, I think, who's present with her, uh, in Philadelphia. Uh, but, uh, the plan is, and we know this is happening sooner than later, is that she will be with us full-time in, in Chicago.
And so you hired an architect and designed this, uh, bridge so that she could walk on a walker across it, or you could wheel her on a wheelchair across it?
Correct, essentially, we could, you know, because she's, she can use either the walker or hold on to things with other people assisting her, she could get across, but there would be no other access to it, um, otherwise.
Okay. That's all, ask Mr. Vargas, right now, the board may have questions of you. Andrea, can you add anything to what your husband has told us?
Well, I think he, he explained it, um, very good. My mother-in-law needs also, uh, quick access to a bathroom. And without this catwalk, we would not be able to, i-if she was at the deck, we would not be able to get her to a bathroom timely. Um, so that is a concern that I have, um, for her, and, uh, I think that's it.
Okay, and, um, and again, the board might ask you some questions. Um, Gilbert, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
And, uh, you have designed this in such a way to, uh, if the, if the variance is granted, to, uh, otherwise, uh, comply with all of the regulations and ordinances of the city, is that right?
Correct.
And, um, designing this in such a way for a person who can't, uh, walk on stairs, uh, creates practical difficulties or hardship in being able to design a method to get to the outdoor space, is that right?
That's correct.
And, um, the zoning code state, uh, the, this board is supposed to, um, uh, only grant variances that are consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, but the zoning ordinance in it, in the very first section, uh, talks about, um, promoting public health and safety and preserving quality of life for residents and visitors. Um, and this would do that, i-in your opinion, would, is that, is that true?
Yes.
I think that's basically our case in chief, uh, both, all of these three people are available for questions.
Okay, and Counselor, we do have, um, Alderman Tom Tony on as well. So, if it makes sense, um, to you, unless the Alderman says he wants to wait until the end, um, we can take his, uh, anything he has to say now and then get to questions.
I would never, I would never say that Alderman Tony shouldn't have talked.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman Tony, are you on?
I am, uh, thanks, Chairman and members of, of the ZBA.
And, and, oh, let me just swear you in really quick, um, so...
Yes, sir.
Will you state your name and, uh, and, and role for us, please?
Um, my name is Tom Tony, I'm the Alderman of the 44th Magnificent Ward.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
I do.
Thank you, okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, uh, Chairman and members of the ZBA. Uh, I wish I could be there in person, uh, but, uh, that being said, uh, the applicant has met, uh, with our office, uh, we have no objection to it. Uh, we have not received any, uh, complaints at all from the neighbors, uh, just questions, uh, you know, I think if my memory serves me correct, this is modest compared to the two buildings on, on each side. There are three flats, and, uh, I don't think it's, uh, while, you know, I, I think this is pretty tame. Um, given the narrative, uh, is, you know, we hear a lot of reasons, uh, for hardship, but I think this one fits the category also. Um, obviously, we want to keep our seniors and our families together in our neighborhood. Um, it's, um, you know, it's, it's a modest, uh, thing, you know, probably the resources to redo a house to make an elevator and stuff like that are probably prohibitive. Um, and with that being said, uh, this project has my support and I'm available for questions.
Okay, great, thank you very much, as always, for coming, Alderman, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, um, we'll have you stay on in case there are questions for you. But I'd like to start questions from the board. Okay, I have one. I'm just wondering, I know your mother, her living quarters are kind of on the second floor. And counselor, you had explained for a second how she gets to the second floor. Is there some type of lift inside?
No, it's generally a once every, you know, several months scenario where we have to get her to the main living floor, her living floor, which is where the main living room, kitchen, bathroom are for her in her bedroom. So once she's up there, she's essentially settled. And then we don't have really a need for a lift otherwise. The rear, just so you're clear, the rear stairwell, the only other option down is a spiral staircase, which would is really impossible. And she's never
Yeah, I got it. And so just to confirm, there's a, there's a rear back porch from the second level, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is it, will that stay in in, I, from the plans, it looks like that will stay in use and the catwalk will go from there?
Yes, and that's that's the egress to the catwalk.
That's the egress to the catwalk, okay. Okay, any other questions from the board?
This is Joene Salt. So so right now, to get to the rooftop, there's a garage, there's a, you go, you go down and then there's stairs adjacent to the garage, is that what's set up now?
Presently, there's nothing on top of the garage. This is all part of the original plan to have and then the deck on the garage so she can have outdoor space.
Thank you.
Okay, just so, so we have it clear, we've got a, we go back and we specifically think about hardship as it relates to our standards. Is the sole hardship here, and counselor, you can, you can chime in on this as well, but is the sole hardship here access for the mother?
I think so. I think so, the the, but, you know, both private and the ADA requires accommodation by both private and government. And I I alluded to the intent and purpose of the the zoning code. And, you know, we have a denial here with which, if granted, would allow this accommodation. So it seems to me it's consistent with the code to where we are able to, especially from a public policy point of view, to keep elderly people in a, in a home, in a family, that we would accommodate them.
Okay, thank you. Any anything else to add from anyone else on that point? Okay, I think we're good then, unless I'm missing any questions from the board. We've got what we need and we'll take this under consideration. I thank everyone for coming on today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go forward. We have the next matter was continued, so we're going to calendar number three ninety-six dash twenty-one dash the this is still with Counselor Moore and the address is ten eight three one South Drake.
So witness, his name is Eddie Rollick, and he's the owner of the house.
Okay, great. Let's see if Eddie Eddie is on. Eddie, if you unmute, I'll just get you sworn in right from the get-go.
All right.
There we go. Okay, can you please state your name and address?
My name is Edward Rollick, one oh eight thirty-one South Drake Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five five.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, great.
This, you're the owner of this house, is that right?
Correct.
You live there with your family?
Yes.
And what we're asking for is a front yard setback relief. And to be honest with the board, for a front porch that is already there, is that right?
Correct.
And the, to give a little history, you're, you have, how old are your children?
Eighteen and twenty-eight.
Okay, and you wanted to both build a extension in your backyard, an addition, and a front porch so you could participate on the block with outdoor space, basically go stooping on the front, is that right?
Correct.
And you hired a contractor who agreed to both do drawings and get a, and get permits, is that right?
Yes.
And you saw the drawings and he showed up with a permit, which you put in the window, is that right?
Yes.
And you some point along the way, when he was building all of this, you ended up having a dispute with him and basically, he walked off the job, is that fair?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, and so you had to kind of finish the work yourself?
Yes.
And it was only then that you found out that the permit only handled the rear addition, it did not handle the front porch, is that right?
Correct. When Building Department came out for final inspections, that's when I was informed that it only covered the addition and not the front porch.
Okay, and and so then you took it upon yourself, you didn't hire an architect, you took it upon yourself to draw the as-built front porch, is that right?
Correct. With the help of Ernest Jackson, I believe his last name was, from City Hall Building Department, so I think it was the EZ permit process or the other program, I can't think of it right now.
So this is before the pandemic, but you ended up going to City Hall multiple times until you got it right?
At least six, seven times.
Okay, and they were very helpful and were patient with you, and eventually they gave you the permit. Or they, or eventually, well, that's when it then arose that you needed a variance in order to get the permit.
Correct.
Okay, and that's why we're in front of the board today.
Yes.
And there's still, you're still going to have about fifteen feet between the sidewalk and your front porch, is that right?
Yes.
And there are several other front porches on the block, so you're not going to change the essential character of the neighborhood, is that right?
No, sir.
And all you're trying to do is come in, at this point, is come into compliance, is that right?
Yes.
And you would not, if you had known you needed a variance and known that your, the permit you did get didn't cover the front porch, you would not have gone forward. It was never your intent to build something with with outside the limits of a permit, is that right?
No, as soon as I found out I had no permit for front porch, I immediately tried to obtain a permit. And that's why we're here today.
Okay, and if the variance is granted, you believe your your front porch will be totally compliant?
Yes.
Right. That's our case in chief, Mr. Chairman. Oh, let me just add, you and I worked out a statement where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Rollick is available for questions.
Okay, questions from the board?
I've got a question. So when when was it that you realized that you needed a permit for the front porch?
When a building inspector from the city came out to do final inspections on my addition, that's when he informed me I did not have a permit for the front porch, which was already constructed.
Okay, and you had you had an addition to the rear?
Yes, to the rear, my my house, not
Right, and you got a permit for that?
Correct.
Okay, and then is it that you thought that the permit for the rear would also cover the the front porch?
That was the impression I was under during the permit or during the process of the porch building. I left the permit in the window. I had no idea.
Okay, and the, did this contractor that you had a fallout with, was he the one who secured the permit?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are you with us?
We lost Chairman, he is probably joining back.
All right, let's see, can people hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, my, I'm having some wifi issues today and it totally shut me down. So that's what I get for being back in my high-rise. Let's, I was asking a question, and I don't mean to interrupt anybody. Were you guys on a different topic?
No, you can go ahead, Chairman.
Okay, I was asking the applicant just who his original general contractor was.
It was all-in-one project management.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? All right. We will take this under consideration, and I thank everyone for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, let's go to calendar number three ninety-seven dash twenty-one dash the and this is at thirty-nine thirty, West sixty-first. And I believe we're staying with Counselor Moore for this.
Yes, thank you. We're looking for Rosa Basio and her husband and an architect named Thomas Home.
Okay, let's see.
Thomas here.
I see Rosa as well.
Mr. Chairman, would you please swear the witness is
Yeah, sure, let's start with Rosa Basio. Rosa, will you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Rosa Basio. Address sixty-nine thirty-nine South Karlov Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so Adon Rivera, we also have you.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. So, Don, will you state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Adon Rivera. My address is sixty-nine thirty-nine South Karlov Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six two nine.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so Thomas Home, are you on?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Thomas Home. Address is nine six five West Chicago Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six four two.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
And Thomas, will you remind me, are you the architect?
No, Prashant Mahakali is the architect, principal architect of the firm, NPC Architects.
Okay.
I'm an architectural designer.
Yep, that's right. I know we've seen you before. Okay, thank you. So do we have John Pimental as well?
I think
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think he's he's kind of the supervisor or job.
Public manager.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think Tom Thomas can handle it.
Perfect. Feel free to go forward.
Thank you. So Rosa, will you tell the board who you are, what you do, and
that's enough?
Yes, well, I am a Chicago Public School, high school teacher. I work at Back of the Arts College Prep as a Spanish teacher. And what else, what else?
And where do you, where do you live now?
I currently rent at thirty-nine, sixty-nine thirty-nine South Karlov Avenue.
And who do you live there with?
With my husband, Adon Rivera, right next to me.
And where is thirty-nine thirty, West sixty-first place from the house where you, or the place where you currently rent?
It's several blocks north of where we are, closer to Pulaski on sixty-first Street Place, and it's the lot that we purchased last year.
Okay, so you were looking around your neighborhood, you've been saving your money while you're renting, and you had hoped to build your own single-family house, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. We've been married.
And this appeared to be a vacant lot that would be available to build a house on, is that right?
That's right. And when we initially investigated with the Realtor, that's what we were told.
And so you actually went all the way through and bought and paid for it, is that right?
That's right.
And you only found out that it wasn't a quote-unquote "buildable" lot when when you went to get a permit, is that right?
That's correct.
And and that's because even though it appears to be empty, it is, and even if it has its own PIN, a zoning lot is different than the pins, which have to do with taxation, is that right?
That's correct.
That's what you've learned after you found out you had this lot that you couldn't build anything on, is that right?
Yes, we we didn't know and we were not informed.
Okay, so what you're trying to do now is make it a buildable lot. And the way to do that is if the lot next door, which used to be part of one zoning lot, if that lot can stand on its own, that is, it can be totally confirming under, I'm sorry, conforming under current law, then this lot, your lot that you purchased, that right now you can only grow tomatoes on, is, would become a buildable lot, is that what you've been informed?
Yes.
So you, fortunately, the people next door, at some time in the past, both these lots were owned by one family and used as one zoning lot, is that your understanding?
Yes.
But fortunate, but and they sold the house to your next-door neighbor, and they sold the lot to you to different, two different families, is that right?
Yes, at two different times as well.
Yes, certainly, your neighbor next door is cooperative and gave you a letter of authorization and filed their own EDS, and and they've allowed you to get variances for them on their lot, to make their lot compliant compliant so that then your lot would become a buildable lot. In other words, we're splitting the old zoning lot, is that your understanding?
Yes.
And so you're here asking the board to grant basically sideyard variances for the lot next door at thirty-nine thirty so that then it no longer will, no longer will depend on your lot for part of its sideyard. And therefore, you will then have a buildable lot, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and you didn't create any of these problems, you're just trying to fix them, is that right?
Yes.
And you and I worked out a a statement where you addressed all of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, sideyard variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, is that right?
That's right.
And that's your husband next to you?
Yes.
Um do you sir have anything to add to Rosa's uh explanation?
Um. I believe uh. She covered everything.
Okay.
Yes.
A wise man. Uh okay, and uh Thomas Home, um you're, you have. Uh drawn drawings of thirty nine thirty. So that the zoning department could determine what was needed to have it stand on its own, is that right?
Yes.
And you've also uh. Have a single family house drawing that if this becomes a buildable lot. Uh you will go forward for a permit to build that as well, is that right?
Yes.
And you, the uh your, both your drawings are accurate. And um if this uh variance is granted, the um. Thirty nine thirty will be uh compliant with current zoning law, is that right?
Yes.
And um if this variance is granted, you believe this will become thirty nine thirty, twenty eight will become a buildable lot. And you'll be able to go forward to get a permit on that single family home, is that right?
Yes.
And you and I uh drafted a statement that would allow this uh that uh addressed all the. Criteria necessary for the board to grant a variance, and if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Mister Chairman, uh that's all I have in our case in chief and each of these people is available for questions.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, um any questions from the board? I think we have everything we need here, so I appreciate everyone for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to calendar number three ninety eight dash twenty one dash Z, this is at thirty two thirty five North Lakewood Avenue.
Mister Chairman, uh. I'm looking for a Steven O'Neal and his architect, Chris Dossi.
Yep.
Uh Steve O'Neal here.
Perfect, um and we also uh let me see. We also have, this is forty four as well, so we also have Tom Tony, if he's uh speaking on this one as well.
I'll be listening first and then say a few words, not much.
We won't, we won't forget about you, we'll we'll take you at the end. So Counselor, the applicant and witness sworn on. So Steve Steve O'Neal, um can you state your name and address, please?
Uh Stephen O'Neal, eight oh seven South Crescent Avenue, Park Ridge, Illinois, six zero zero six eight.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, and uh Christopher Dase, um state your name and address.
Chris Dasey, five nine three zero Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana.
And do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay.
So Steve O'Neal, you are the developer of a four unit, hope to be condo uh development on this. Uh fifty foot wide lot, is that right?
Uh that is correct, it's a forty eight foot wide lot.
Very well, thanks for correcting me and um the uh it's it's going to be condos, not rentals. Uh so you're very aware of what uh what the market wants and uh hoping you'll be able to sell them, is that right?
That is correct, yes, I've been building in this area for many years.
And one of the things the market wants now is uh some outdoor space. Uh and you would be able to give the four units the outdoor space uh on a garage roof deck, is that right?
That is correct.
Um and um you also are required to have uh to have rear yard open space. And uh Mister Dossi will have a uh couple of demonstrative exhibits. But it's your understanding that um if you put the, what we've called the hop- Hopkins stair, the stair that is. Right up against the wall, that that would encroach on the rear yard open space. And um you would need a variance for that because if it if it encroaches, you need to have a ten by ten. Uh space and if something is over it or encroaches it, it doesn't count, is that right?
Correct.
It would also, those stairs would be duplicative rather than the uh much. Uh uh more efficient existing rear stair you have. By building a less than two foot bridge across to the roof deck, is that right?
That is correct, yeah, it's actually a twelve inch bridge connecting the garage to the rear uh stair.
And those stairs would be there in any case because the uh residents have to be able to get up and down. The back and be able to get out in case of the fire, is that right?
Correct.
Um so what we're here today is to ask the board to allow the rear yard variance to allow that. Twelve inch uh bridge to connect the. Uh existing as of right stair uh to the uh roof deck. Um so we don't have to build a duplicative stair, and if we did have to build a dup- duplicative stair. We'd have to get a variance on the rear yard open space, is that your understanding?
Yes.
And uh you and I uh worked out a uh statement whereby you addressed all of the criteria necessary. For this board to grant um this relief and if you were to continue to testify. You testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Incidentally, you also filed a um. A economic analysis that showed uh that if you, if without this variance. Uh you uh either wouldn't be able to sell these or uh you may be in a negative posture, is that right?
Yes, it'd be a bad position if it if it doesn't work.
And uh that's because, first of all, this, since you started this with the pandemic. And with the supply chain problems, the cost of this uh building, this building has gone up significantly and. Your margins are already very, very tight, is that right?
Correct, yeah, I was uh buying lumber in the middle of uh March, April and May when the lumber was up four hundred percent. So uh my construction costs have have gone through the roof.
And and what you're understanding, if if uh you don't have a garage roof deck and your competition does.
Uh I I pretty much have a unsellable unit uh compared to the market.
And.
Two units.
And so all of uh you didn't create any of these conditions, is that right?
No.
You're just trying to deal with them.
That's right, correct.
Uh and as we said, you you and I, you uh have made a statement addressing all of the other criteria. Um so I'll now ask Chris Dossi, are you there?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, and um I don't know if Jeanette can put it up, but you created a demonstrative existed. Uh three demonstrative exhibits here that we filed as our hearing exhibits uh that show. Uh how a separate staircase would work in this situation, is that right?
Yes, I did.
And I don't know if we're able to put it up, but uh will you describe it verbally um what happens?
What I did is I I located a separate stair, as you call it, the um uh the element, elevator stair. That the Hopkins stair, that if you put that stair in my uh rear open space, if I relocate. The stair to one side, it becomes only ten foot um eleven as the rear yard. Open space, which we're required to have, and I don't mean to correct you, but we have to have twelve feet under RT four, not ten feet, as you. Excellently said earlier.
Thank you for correcting me, it's different, it's different under different zoning.
Yes.
This is our four and.
Yes, this is the 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 diagram I wanted to show, exactly. So you see that we put the dimensions in, it's a ten foot eleven and at the posts and eleven foot one and a half. At the rails on that side, um and that would, that's also keeping the trash enclosure on the north side. So that we could have, we could make one half of the re- required rear space work, but we cannot make the other half work. And then we change the stair location in a couple spots so that we could show that where we ever relocate it, we are going to run into this problem. So here I've moved the stair to the north side and yeah, the stair works, but now I have to relocate the trash enclosure. Now the trash enclosure makes the other area not work.
And so in either case, you would need a a a different variance to um. Uh lessen the uh outdoor, the the rear yard open space requirement, is that right?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
So the most efficient way to do it, the most without having a duplicative. Uh purpose stair is to do it the way you've designed it, which is to just have the twelve inch bridge from the existing stair.
That's correct.
Um and you've done all of this uh consistent with the um. The the all other codes and regulations, if this if this variance is granted, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I worked out a statement whereby you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance and if. Uh you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's correct.
Um these witnesses are available for uh questions, um Mister Chairman.
Two questions come to mind and and board feel free to chime in as we go. Um I I see a bunch of roof decks on top of the main building, can you describe those?
Those are for the penthouse units and they're private to those two penthouse units. And the the decks on the garage are for the duplex downs.
Okay, so um and the duplex downs appear from the picture of the back. Of the building to some have some sort of covered outdoor space, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think our line of questioning, uh just to cut to the chase, is gonna have. You guys continuing the argument of that this is in a self-created hardship. Um you know, cause on its face, the uh the main building was created how it was by yourselves. Um so I'd like to just hear a little bit more on.
Mister Chairman, I don't, the the zoning code, the front building is as of right, it's. Uh it doesn't encroach into the rear yard, um it it's what is allowed to be built by the code. Uh that's not a self-created, that's the whole idea of variances is to make an even playing field.
Yeah. And. Tom, just to cut you off, though.
Yeah.
But they have come forth with this plan at the beginning of the project. These are the people who presented the project in the first place, so we see this from time to time, where it's like. Build something, then come back and ask for more, so that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of.
So I I see that all the time and if if uh if you wait uh for the. Three or uh you know, the time that it takes to uh get a um. A uh denial and then uh to get in front of the zoning board before you even start your building. It 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 you lose several months and so any builder who's trying to be efficient and. Uh do a a reasonable job uh gets the first permit and and then. Goes through and and adds this back, but uh it's it's a matter of timing, it's not a matter of. That you're creating something different, this is what you could have done, but it would, you would have had to start four or five months later, is my understanding. Mister O'Neal is, it, would you add something different to that?
Yes, it would take, um I'm a small time builder, I do one project a year, I do some third party GC work. Um for me to try to 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 go through that process and, you know, I'm just too small of a contractor. To be able to withstand that kind of holding power, uh so that's that's where I, that's where I'm at.
Okay, um questions from the board related to that topic?
Yeah, um this is Ann McDonald, this one's for Mister O'Neal, I just hoped you could expand a little bit on on what you just said. I um being in the industry, you have some, I think shorthand, it would be great to understand a little bit more about what you meant, you don't have that holding power.
Uh holding power, as far as uh if I purchase the property and I have, I have to get a loan from a bank and then I have to. Uh wait six, seven months, uh eight months maybe to to get for this to come through. It would just, I wouldn't be able to make financial sense of it, um I would just. It would just eat me up with interest working with a bank, uh like I said, I'm just a one man show.
And so was it always the plan to put the roof deck on the garage then?
It was a, it was a hope, um yes.
It it's still a hope because we need the board to grant the variance, but 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 my experience with developers. Uh is is this is the only sensible way to do it, to just sit dead for several months waiting for a uh. You know, this isn't some devious way, this is, this is the efficient way to do it. You get, you get the building going and then you you simultaneously start the process. That will eventually get you where you wanna go, uh and it wouldn't make sense to just sit and do nothing for the. Uh when you already own the property and you can get the the as of right building without. A permit without the uh, you know, without the variance which will take uh an extended period of time.
Um yeah, I don't know, I think, can you explain this several months concept a bit more because. It's we don't create the process of having to come through approval for the whole project, but that's just how it is.
I I don't understand what you mean by that's how it is, the the uh you don't, there's, there's no. I mean, they they could have done this with with just uh pads on the back and no parking. And then two years later decide to add the garage, the, you know, the building, the building is one thing. And then uh uh you know, it takes, so you have to do plans. What they do is they do the plans, and and I mean, this is Mister O'Neal who does this, this is the standard in the industry, really. The um you do the 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 as of right plans for the building where you don't need variances. You get a permit for that and you start digging and you start doing it and that's all gonna take many months. Meanwhile, then you come in for an amendment, as soon as that permit's issued, basically, the architect comes back for an amendment. Um to do what's gonna take, gonna take a process through the zoning board. And it takes, and the architect can tell, but you know, six weeks, eight weeks, whatever, just to get the denial. Then uh depending, sometimes the board has been, you know, uh running pretty. Um if we file early in one month, we might be the third Friday the next month, usually it's two months. Uh there have been times when it's three or four months, there was a time a few years ago when it was about six months. So uh as Mister O'Neal said, a small developer can't sit paying interest. Uh you know, for six months before they even get the first permit to start the building. Whereas if they do it this way, they get the building up and you know, they're almost done with the building. When the time runs to get the uh to get the uh variance. And it all, it all works out at the end, uh which is the only efficient and sensible way to do it.
As it, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Saul.
It's not unnecessarily a question, but I was gonna say, um uh this is Jolene Saul, I I don't know that it's industry. Standard, Tom, because we've seen obviously people who come in front of us before they start building, requesting these, but. It sounds like the developer weighed some risk and took a calculated risk, you know, there's the risk of. Holding um and waiting for all the approvals to come through or starting and then taking the risk that this might not be approved. Um on the backend, so I just wanted to add that comment.
And and I will, I'll I'll also add that I I do think there's a way to. Present this all in a way at the beginning that gets a rooftop deck access because. If we're looking at the main building combined with a Hopkins stair, there would have been a way to make the main building short. The main building shorter with a Hopkins stair would have been allowed by right.
But that that Mister Chairman, I object to because that that you're now saying that. Uh he shouldn't build the building that the the code allows him to build. Uh and 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 if he does, then he's creating his own problem and and that's, that's not the purpose and has never been. The thirty years I've been doing it, is you've never, it's never been that you've created your own problem if you build what you're allowed to build. Uh.
Well, what I'm saying, I'm not saying that, I'm saying he would have been allowed to do both, had it been presented. Had it been presented in a way at the beginning, you compromised a little bit on the main building to get rooftop access by right.
Well, I don't.
He's here for a variation. So, um, you know, by variation, he's going outside of what's allowed by right.
Well, now we get into, uh, you know, that the Alderman Hopkins solution, uh, you know, made sense for single families, but it, it, and, uh, you know, I've talked to, he recently had, uh, a change in staff, but I have, was talking to the previous, uh, his zoning person. His solution did, doesn't take care of the problem for multifamily. It makes no sense when you have, all it takes is a, a 12 inch, uh, bridge to build a duplicative, a whole nother steel structure. I, I mean, that's, that's makes no common sense at all.
Okay. Well, I, that's not for us to decide. Um, so let's keep going. Other, other questions from the board. Okay. Maybe we call, because I do know Alderman Tony is here. Um, Alderman, do you want to say anything? You do not have to.
Oh, I, if I'm not mistaken, Chairman, we did put a letter of no opposition on this on file. I was actually for the other Wellington I wanted to speak on, but, um, as, as far as this concerned, this has not met with any objection with the neighbors. It is on the corner. And neighbors both on the Melrose side and Lakewood side have no objection to it. It looks like a big building, but as you say, it's only four units. It's not, uh, not that many units. Actually from the street, it looks a lot, a lot bigger, but, uh, you know, I can see the outdoor space for the, for the, the rooftop and the garage. And you know, it is, you know, I have an objection to it. Let's, let's leave it at that.
So good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Alderman. We'll see you on the next one. Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay. I think we'll take this under consideration. Um, so as always, I thank everyone for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are now calling calendar number 399-21-Z. And this is at 662-64 West Wellington Avenue. Um, and we do have some opposition on this one. So I want to make sure that everyone, uh, gets promoted. So we're going to be looking for a Ben Bradston and Amina Hellstrand on opposition.
Present, yes.
Okay, great.
Also present.
We have, okay, was that Amina?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so before we get started, I'll just give a little quick rundown on how we, we view these when there's opposition. We'll have the applicant and counselor put on their case in chief. At that point in time, the board will ask them initial questions. Um, then it will go over to the objectors and, um, both of you can state your objection. We always just ask that you are not repetitive. Um, and at the same time, you are able to ask questions of the applicant. Then finally we turn back to the applicant who can do a little bit of, uh, cross testimony rebuttal towards the objectors. Since, um, this whole time, the board might be asking questions and afterwards we close it out. Because Alderman Tony is here, I want to ask him, um, how he wants his portion of the process to be. Alderman Tony, would you like to go at the beginning? Would you like to go at the end? We, uh, are up for whatever.
Chairman, I'll, I'll speak, uh, near the end. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. We'll call, we'll call on you at the end. So does that process make sense?
I think so.
Okay.
It does.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll guide it along. And Counselor Moore, if you said you think so, you've been here quite a few times. So we'll get it right. With, with that counselor, go ahead and let's get started.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I have Marcelo Pappas and his architect, Jack Stoneberg.
Present.
Present.
Thank you very much. Um, so first up, uh, Marcelo Pappas, would you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Marcelo Pappas, 3654 North Lincoln, Chicago, Illinois, 67613.
If you do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay. So Jack Stoneberg, um, state your name and address, please.
Yes, I Jack Stoneberg, Architect, 3320 North Ravenswood in Chicago, Stoneberg Gross Architects. Thank you.
Thank you. And do swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, Chairman. Thank you.
Great.
Okay. So, um, Marcelo, uh, will you tell us, um, who you are? That is, you know, who your, who your company is and what you specialize in?
Uh, my name is Marcelo Pappas. I'm representing Chicago Apartment Place. We're a second generation family-owned business, uh, specializing in the restoration of historic apartment buildings in Lakeview, Lincoln Park, Wrigleyville. Uh, we've been active in these neighborhoods, um, restoring historic, primarily apartment buildings, uh, for the past 40 years.
And, um, tell us a little bit about this building and why you're interested in renovating or restoring it?
Uh, the, the property, uh, in question is located in the Lakeview Historic District. Uh, it's recognized by the state and the federal government. Um, the district's been, um, on the United States National Register of Historic Places since 1977, uh, with the Lakeview Historic District. Um, and the property in question has been identified as a contributing building to this, uh, historic district. It, it's important to understand, uh, we're planning on performing a historic restoration of the existing building. Uh, and we'll be working with the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency and the National Park Service on our proposed restoration. Um, we're here today. We're hoping to additionally build in addition on the rear of the building, um, which will be in line with the historic nature and character of the building. Um, I, I don't know that we have any interior photos, but, um, the building in general, it, it's gorgeous on the outside. The inside, um, is in a rough condition, um, is in need of a, uh, major overhaul. Um, but it's still has all of its original wood trim, uh, quarter sawn oak, original details. Um, and, uh, it'll be lovely once it's cleaned up.
And why, what's the problem with, well, okay. So, and what do you want to do? You're going to add, uh, how many units are there now?
There's currently, uh, seven units in the existing building. Um, there's an additional unit in the coach house, um, which is detached. I'm not sure if there's a photograph of that. Um, you'll see in this, this picture, it's, um, on the left hand. Uh, the, the lot is L-shaped and you can see the coach house is on the leg of the L.
You're going to get rid, you're going to get rid of the coach house?
Yes. Um, yeah. So our, our, our main hardship, um, stemmed from the fact that the building is in fact historic, uh, under historic preservation guidelines directed by the Illinois Historic, uh, Preservation Agency and the National Park Service. Um, we're not able to disrupt the building's character or the, uh, building's facade. So, um, it's important to note, um, that if we were to tear down the existing building, it's not, uh, outlined in orange or anything of that nature. Um, we would be able to build something much larger than what's existing there now. Uh, and we'd also be able to build something much larger, um, than what we're actually proposing today. Um, so the, the hard hardship stemmed from the fact that we're, we're not tearing down the building and we're instead looking to restore and improve it. Um, if you see in this diagram, the building, the, the existing building, and this is actually our proposal, um, rather than what's existing. So I don't know if whoever's controlling can go to, um, us, yeah, the, the site plan is on, the existing site plan is on the left. Um, if you, if you see the building, existing building is currently set off from its eastern and western neighbors, um, by 11 feet. Uh, the current, you know, building code requires a five-foot side yard setback. So you know, the, the existing building is, you know, more than double, um, uh, the, the side yard setbacks. Um, we're looking to, um, you know, maintain those oversized side yard setbacks, uh, due to the nature of this, the historic nature of the building. Um, so our request in essence is to maintain these oversized side yard setbacks, um, in exchange for being able to, uh, make additional improvements in the rear. Um, and we firmly believe that our eastern and western neighbors, um, I think one of which is, is with us today. Um, our other objector represents, uh, is, is a representative of, uh, our rear, uh, neighbor group. Um, but we, we believe that not only our eastern and western neighbors, but all our neighbors and the greater community, will, uh, benefit from our proposed project.
Okay. Let me ask you some questions. So, uh, your lot is 75 by 152. Is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And well, I, okay, I'll ask those questions with.
So, so as those are the technical ones, we'll go to Jack.
I'll ask Jack. Okay. So, um, from the beginning, you, so what you're going to do is build, you can't build up or out. So you're going to build in the rear. Is that right?
Correct.
And actually, uh, you're still going to have, you're going to get rid of the existing coach house and you're going to get rid of an indoor, uh, um, existing garage. So you're actually going to, uh, have more open space in the back than is currently there. Is that correct?
What, what we will be demolishing, which is the rear, uh, deck, uh, structure and the existing coach house, it's roughly equivalent, um, to what we're proposing to reconstruct on the site. So we'll be internalizing all of our site's parking, you know, so when, when we asked for a reduction in the rear yard setback, it is a true, uh, rear yard setback. And there will not be any, um, additional garage structures with roof decks or anything of that nature. If you see on a proposed site plan, um, we're internalizing all of our parking, um, which it's currently not. Um, we'll be creating a, a, our, our open space, our rear yard open space requirement, which is sizable. It's 10 feet by 80 feet will stretch along the entire, uh, backside of our property. Um, and, um, you know, we've invited our, our neighbors to the north, uh, to participate in the design of that rear yard open space. Quite frankly, um, we, we don't mind if it benefits them more than it benefits us, uh, for this project.
So from the beginning, you were aware that you have neighbors to the east, west and north. Is that right?
Correct.
And so you, uh, worked with Jack to design a, a, a plan that would be cognizant of them and respectful of their needs as well. Is that correct?
Correct. We made a lot of concessions in.
So, so that's what, so then you had meeting that, so that was even before you, uh, went forward with the project. In your design, you were thinking of, of what you might do. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then when you actually, uh, came forward with this plan, you shared it with all, with the neighbors to the east, west and north. Is that right?
That's right.
And how many meetings do you think and, uh, have you had altogether with all of your neighbors?
Um, we're, we're surrounded. Our, our neighbors to the east, west and north, each one of those are condo buildings. Um, all multi-unit. So we have a lot of individual neighbors. Um, we looped Alderman right away. Um, we've, with our neighbors, we've shared our plans, uh, as soon as they were available. Um, we have had formal or, or written, uh, question and answers with our neighbor, with all of our neighbors regarding the project. The Alderman's office has, um, hosted a Zoom, uh, community meeting. It was really just for a neighbor. So neighbor meeting, uh, regarding the project. Um, we followed up with additional answer, question and answers after that. Um, it was requested that we prepare a shade and shadow study, which we've done and shared with the neighbors. Site diagram at the request of the neighbors. Um, and we most recently prepared a good neighbor statement, um, kind of outlining all of the, um, you know, call and promises or, uh, intentions, um, that we, uh, will undertake if this project is approved. And we've, we've shared that with the Alderman as well as the neighbors.
Okay. And then, uh, we go through some of the concessions and accommodations that you've made.
Uh, a lot of the concessions we've made were in the design phase. I mean, the, the, the obvious ones, we've got this coach house. Uh, it's being torn down. It's in an extremely rough condition. It abuts, uh, our neighbor to the, um, west garage and garage patio. It's visible from all of their rear bedrooms. That'll be demolished. The rear yard open space, uh, with, with internalizing all of our parking is a major concession. Um, our, we, we'll be eliminating a rear four-story deck, which is a source of, you know, gatherings and noise complaints and internalizing all that noise. Um, we've reduced the balcony size at the request of our, um, a side balcony at the request of our western neighbor. We've made strategic, uh, window placements to avoid, uh, any privacy concerns. Um, and we'll be moving an electric pole that abuts our western neighbor's garage. And, uh, there's currently high voltage power lines that are within arm's reach of their garage patio that will be moved off of, from, from that area. And.
Are you doing something with drainage as well?
Yes. Oh, yeah. So we, it, you know, there's a site drainage, site grain, uh, grading and drainage issue, a retaining wall issue, fencing issues. Um, let's see, I'm looking at my good neighbor letter here. Um, you know, fencing issues raised by all three of our neighbors that currently exist and will exist in the course of our construction, we've agreed, um, to remedy. Um, and the site grading and drainage issue, tree removal. We've already removed some mulberry tree, one mulberry tree at the request of one of our neighbors. And there's additional tree removal, um, requests that, you know, we'll happily do. Um, and one of the biggest concessions is involving our neighbors to the north and, um, you know, you know, allowing them to propose a landscape design for our rear yard open space. Um, and involving them in that process to the extent they'd like to be involved.
When, when you're all done, the, um, there'll actually be more open space in the rear of the building than there is currently. Is that accurate?
Hmm. Jack, can you answer that? I, I, I think it would be roughly about the same. The, the actual rear yard open space will be very sizable and our landscaped area in the rear will be much larger than what it is now.
Yeah, it might be, it might be helpful, Tom, if they could bring up exhibit A, which has some more three-dimensional, uh, view of the site.
Why don't I finish, why don't I finish with Marcelo?
Okay.
And, and then we'll ask you to do some demonstrative stuff. Um, Marcelo, you and I, uh, worked on a, um, statement whereby you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Correct.
And you're available for questions, uh, both from the objectors and from, uh, the board. Uh, should they have any? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So Jack, um, can we start kind of back at the beginning here? So, uh, first of all, you have an existing building that's always creates certain, um, hardships if you were, will, or certain issues that you have to work around. Is that right?
Yes, of course.
And then, and then you have an L-shaped lot. That's a problem. Is that right?
Yeah. I mean, the lot's got an odd configuration where it doesn't abut an alley. It has a drive access to the alley. So if you think of maybe a typical lot that's 75 feet wide, it would have a 75 feet of access to an alley. And in this case, we just have a little, uh, you know, the L-shaped short leg of the, is, is, uh, is westbound to an existing alley.
Okay. And it's half of the lot is 4.5 and half of the lot is RM5. In a 4.5 with 12,190 square feet, you could build 17 units as of right. If you knock the building and start it over, is that right? If you knock the building and start it over, is that right?
I think that math is correct. Yes. 32, 32 units.
Okay. And we're only asking to, uh, to end up with. Okay, and you were only asking to uh eh, to end up with eleven. Uh, we're starting with seven, we're getting rid of one, uh, so we're adding five uh to the uh, the the.
No, that's that, that's all right, there's, there's seven existing units in the historic.
Building.
Front building, there's one, you can see the the coach house on the bottom of this slide, that's the coach house. There's one dwelling unit in the coach house, so there's eight existing dwelling units, and we're proposing eleven total, so.
So you're getting rid of the the coach house, and you'll be adding four to the seven in the main building?
Exactly, I think this slide that's up shows kind of the the two different sides of this building, how, you know, in nineteen oh five was when this building was originally permitted. And in th- this uh historic district, you know, the census of nineteen twenty-seven had all the residents noted as rental units. So I think it's, it's, it was built as a rental property, it wasn't built as a mansion. And in the, you know, Lakeview Historic District, you know, Julie and I have walked the blocks, and we have, you know, had to uh essentially prove to the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency and the National Park Service that this building is a contributing structure. And in that exercise, uh, I think everyone on on all, on all agencies has agreed that this building is like the premier building type of a of a rental property. And, you know, the 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 concept uh that Marcelo's family is taking on to not even turn it into condominiums, to keep it a rental property, is just one more level, one more dimension of of their restoration, which is uh, which is terrific.
And then Marcelo mentioned, or I I tried to ask not very well, uh, about uh, what you're getting rid of and what you're adding, and and particularly in the rear there, what the effect is, can you?
Yeah, so this is the, this is the existing site plan for the zoning board and and the chairman to review. It has the existing coach house and the existing rear porch footprints identified, and what I think are orange, the bright color. Uh, and those, those square footages in combination total, you know, fifteen hundred and sixty-seven square feet. And if they would toggle down to the next page in this exhibit, we would be able to show what the proposed addition is, which is seventeen hundred and seventy-one square feet. So it's a hundred square feet plus or minus greater than what's there on the existing footprint. Um, but what's, we're really providing is, you know, this rear yard open space requirement, which is in compliant with the zoning code, which is eight hundred square feet. Um, and we'll note, just for everybody to acknowledge, that the the drive aisle, which is required to access the parking, which is pavement for vehicular vehicle, for vehicles, that can't count towards the rear yard open space, so we're really having to provide eight hundred square feet plus this twenty-foot drive aisle for the entire width of the property to provide the enclosed parking.
And when, what will the distance between the uh new building and the rear lot line be of, that will be all open?
It's, it's, it's a twenty-eight foot setback, and then there's two bays. We're again trying to integrate into the design, you know, some of the aspects of the historic property. You can see on the historic property, there's uh what I'll call uh triangular, they're not triangular bays, but they're beveled bays. They're not the round bays. And each, both the east and the west facades of the existing buildings have these bays, and we're trying to include those bays on the rear of the building as well, so.
So uh, in your experience, i- is this um a uh efficient way to try to save this uh existing building?
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm not like the financial person here, but I know, I know Marcel would have a lot to talk about.
From an architectural point of view, um.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking to integrate seamlessly, you know, an addition that won't impose itself on the, on the historic structure.
And um, you will otherwise uh comply with all codes and ordinances of the city, is that right?
Yes, it's just the the one rear yard setback issue that's in question.
And in your um professional opinion, it'll fit right into the character of the neighborhood, is that right?
Yeah, this project will be, you know, a a a benchmark for for other people to admire. And uh, you can see the back of the building here is shown with the rear yard open space. Uh, uh, the rear yard open space is eighty feet, it's adjacent to, you know, you know, kind of an interesting project to the north that has these terraces that are below grade. It's a townhouse project, and the terraces are below grade. So their, their terraces will stand, you know, where, you know, Marcelo has made the concession that that uh, that he's willing to allow these folks to participate in the design of that feature. And you can kind of see the existing conditions of this rear area right now. That's why I say it's, it's really the uh, the the picture on the left is, is the, is the adjacent neighbors to the north. Their lower terraces, which are kind of occupied by a variety of elements. Um, and the several trees that are there now, and that's what we're gonna be expanding upon, uh, is that uh, is that green space uh for everyone to enjoy I I or and benefit from.
And you and I worked out a statement whereby you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this uh variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief.
Okay, um, any questions from the board before we go on um to the objective? You know, I think one thing I, that would be great if Marcelo could uh touch on briefly, um, just so it's not something we're viewing as assumed. Um, but we didn't get at all really into the economic analysis, and my gut is that um economics is the reason that you're not keeping the building as it is and just renovating from within. So I think it would be good to hear a bit from Marcelo about um the difference between um the economics with the variation versus without.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry I missed that. Uh, Marcelo, you you uh have very strong views about that, would you tell the board about uh what this, economically what this is, if you just fixed up the building as it is, or if you did it the way you're going to do it, and what really is your economic motivation?
The um, the 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 form that the ZBA uses does not really fit this project very well. Um, this is not a for-sale project, it's um, you know, we're buy-and-hold investors, we're owner-operators. So I I had to make assumptions to um fill this sheet in, uh, but it's the assumption that anyone, you know, constructing or purchasing an apartment building would make. Um, what it shows is, I've showed negative returns um e- either way. Uh, but what's missing from this form is the fact that i- if this project is is successful, um, we will receive historic tax credits uh from the federal government, um, hence us working with um, all these uh federal and state agencies. So again, we do plan on doing historic restoration to make this deal work. Um, those are in place because uh these deals don't typically work um at all. Um, the most profitable thing to do on this site uh would be to demolish it and build new. It's a high zoning, it's a huge site, um, it supports a ton of units. Um, like I said, the side yard setbacks are, you know, currently double what they would be. Um, so what what's also missing from my economic analysis form would be a third option of a tear down. Um, that was never our intention, it's not the Alderman or the community's intention. Um, so that was not what I modeled here. Um, but i- in order to justify a historic restoration um of this magnitude, you've, you've got to make additional improvements on the site uh to justify the project. And and my uh economic analysis form shows that um without um, the benefit of additional improvements on this site, uh, the project does not work.
Good, more filled really quick on that, so if you didn't do the addition, I'm trying to see the difference between the addition and not an addition, so if you kept the building as is, but um renovated the inside, would you? Um, I'm I'm just interested, it uh, what would that return look like? As, would you be eligible for these historic tax credits that you're mentioning?
We would, but it would be, it would, it would, right now, we're looking at a negative three percent return as just as pure restoration, uh, negative one percent return with the addition. Um, the um, I I I haven't calculated the exact historic tax um credits where that would put the percent return, but it would put the um, it would, it would make with the addition profitable and the without um a a continue to be a negative return.
Okay, so are you saying um without the, without the addition portion of it, that this, that your project here is just unfeasible?
Yes, a- and and to that point, I mean, wh- when we um were awarded the contract for this building, the, these slides are, wh- when we were awarded the contract for this building, um, you know, we were chosen because we were the preservationists. Uh, everyone who was submitting on this project um was looking to tear it down and um, and build a new. Um, we we knew the Alderman um wouldn't want that, we knew the community wouldn't want that, and that's, that's not our business.
Hi, this is.
Yep, go ahead, Jolene.
Yeah, hi, Jolene Saul. Um, so if you were awarded historic tax credits, would that just, would that reduce your debt, or how would that come into the deal?
It, it's awarded for um, i- it goes to your federal, your personal federal income tax um a- as a credit. Um, so in order to get it, you have to continue to own and operate the building for, has to be in service for five years. And once it's in service, you um start to receive those credits. So we wouldn't be able to sell the building um within that time period, not that uh we would. Um, but it's, it's a, it's a personal federal income tax credit uh that goes to the individuals um who are in the ownership group.
Okay, and then, in some cases, and I asked the question that way, because in some cases, you know, the equity, there's equity in exchange for the tax credit and goes into the deal, but it sounds like that's not what you're doing here. Um, and then the, is there a difference in the amount of tax credits um for each scenario, and what is the estimated value of those tax credits?
The tax credits um are twenty percent of the cost of the restoration. So uh, there's no credits relating to any new construction. It just uh applies to a percentage of the cost of the restoration, so the the addition is not considered restoration.
Yeah, so what's that number?
Uh, it'll be twenty percent, um, it it, it's hard to say, it has to be approved, it's not approved yet.
You have an estimate, right?
Yeah, we, the restoration, the restoring building, uh, we're looking at upwards of a million and a half dollars to restore it. Twenty percent of that will come back as a tax credit, assuming y- you know, it's approved, and 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 what they approve it for.
And I'll try to make this my last question on that point, and that's an annual tax credit for how many years, so two, you said a million, yeah.
It just, it's, is until it's used. So if you, you have to have a lot of income to be able to use it in in a, in a one year, so usually it just continues to carry forward.
So it's just a one-time credit?
No, it's.
Growing annual, mm-hmm.
No, it's, yes, it's a one-time credit, and then usually, you know, you don't have that much income, so you don't use it all in one year, and it continues to carry forward until it's all used.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Other questions from the board before we um pass the baton over to the objectors? All right, let's uh, let's, let's carry it forward. Um, so Ben and Amina, we're gonna go to you, and either of you can start. Um, we have no preference there, um, and I'm I'm just gonna get you sworn in, and then you can state your objections. And again, you can ask questions of the applicant if you want. So Amina, Amina, would you like to start?
Sure.
Great, okay, so Amina, will you please state your name and address?
Amina Halstern, thirty-twelve North Waterloo Court, Chicago six oh six five seven.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thank you, okay, go right ahead.
Okay, um, so thank you very much for hearing um our objections. We fully support the renovation of an existing historic structure. As an architectural designer myself, I'm very happy to see this building restored. It's been in, you know, disrepair for many years, so very supportive of that. Um, I think what we are opposed to is the new addition. So um, we had submitted a letter, um, a formal written letter um that came from all three surrounding buildings. So that is the Wellington Townhomes, seven oh two Wellington Condominiums, as well as the Waterloo Court Condominiums. I also sit on the Waterloo Court Board, so I am representing um our board today. And I know that um our group has had conversations with Marcelo in the past, as well as Alderman Tony, and I was unable to attend those as I was out of the country at the time. Um, so the things that we are um opposed to is first, um, I'm speaking, this is kind of preaching to the choir, but the zoning ordinance is set in place for a reason. So some of those um reasons that it exists is to preserve the overall quality of life for residents and visitors, protect the character of the neighborhood, and ensure adequate light, air, privacy, and access to the property. And that's coming from the zoning ordinance itself, right? So the developer provided a um shade analysis for um the four, um, essentially the equinoxes of the um sun, and the shade analysis shows a substantial reduction in the hours of sunlight for the neighboring buildings. Um, especially for the Waterloo Court, not the um area that directly is adjacent to the rear property line, but to the east and rear of the property. Um, that equates to approximately a four-hour loss of sunlight um for our units um in the spring and fall, which is a considerable impact. So I think that this um negatively impacts our privately owned units by reducing the amount of natural light in our homes, and diminishes the enjoyment of outdoor areas. Um, it will also limit the ability of the um neighbor to the east to cultivate a garden, which is currently established at that location. And it also adds um additional bulk to an already very large building. You know, in, I understand that they're saying that this is, you know, going to be something that people are gonna look to. Well, nobody's gonna look to it except for the directly surrounding neighbors, it's in the back of the building. So so no one else is going to have access to this except for the three adjacent neighbors. Um, we have had conversations with Marcelo in the past, as well as Alderman, and they acknowledged that our concerns were valid. Um, but mentioned the financial obligations, um, and that they needed the addition to make this property financially viable. And we understood that going in, um, but we don't believe that um asking us to give up uh what are our rights in terms of the zoning ordinance, um, that we should have to give those up um to make this project financially viable for a developer who's not going to own or occupy, they, they're gonna own this building, but they will not be personally occupying this building.
Agreed, and and Amina, do you have any questions um for the applicant, or else maybe some of the board has questions for you?
I don't necessarily have, uh, I have a couple more comments from what was said earlier. Um, there were a couple of hardships that were mentioned, and one of those being that they were purchasing a historical building, and that the uh shape of the lot, and both of those items were known going into this purchase. It was very well established in the um sale of this property. Um, what the property was, people had access to um, come look at the property, not the interior, but the exterior. The lot lines were known, so none of this was a secret going in, so um I I don't know that those are considered hardships. In my personal and professional opinion, those were all known quantities going into this.
Do any members of the board have questions for Ms. Halstern? Okay, so with that, Ms. Halstern, if I, all good with you if I pass to Ben Brabston?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yep, thank you. So Ben, can you please state your name and address as well?
Ben Brabston, 702 West Wellington, Chicago Illinois 60657.
Right, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, perfect, go right ahead.
I think Amina did a very good job communicating it. The one other piece I would add is that this building was recently purchased, as is, the building is purchased in its current state. So those of us that live there and see it every day know the building is, is not in good condition. We look at the coach house on a recurring basis, can see it on our windows. And we know that that building needs repair. This was something that was visible and known before the purchase was made. It was part of the purchase expectation. So from our perspective, we were a bit surprised that suddenly this hardship came up when it was known going in, echoing Amina's point. Her other points around the privacy and concerns and blocking, I echo all those. I don't think it's worth repeating. So rather than taking more time, I would echo much of what Amina said, and thank you for the time.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So any questions from the board for Mr. Brabston? Okay, so what we'll do now is we'll go back to the applicant. And they have the opportunity here to ask questions of the objectors or do any sort of rebuttal. So Counselor, you can take it from there.
Thank you. So Jack, would you please address some of Ms. Amina's comments about the light and air and quality of life? And both how, how it, how the net result is going to improve, as well as not diminish the current situation?
Yeah, I think, I think it's interesting, I mean, it's, it's difficult to, I mean, this slide is showing, you know, the townhouses to the north, which their side yards, their, you know, this building, this townhouse to the north, the, the side terraces, those are side yards, that's not their rear yard, right? And the townhouse ordinance requires, you know, those adjacent open spaces to be open to above and not occupied. And so you can see, I mean, some of the, some of their open spaces are non-conforming in and amongst themselves, right? They have decks over their open spaces, their open spaces, one of them has a three seasons room, you know? And so the adjacent 702 to the west of our property is, so I mean, we can get into a technical analysis of the solar shading if we, I'm just trying to orient and show that, that the, all three of these properties that surround the site in question have, have non-conforming open spaces themselves. So the, the two adjacent east and west properties have garages that extend to the rear property line and effectively are connecting to the principal structure. There's no landscaping on any of the adjacent properties. There's not one tree on any of the adjacent properties. So their rear yard open space in effect has become, you know, the 662 Wellington open space. And so when we, when we look at the square footage that we're taking off of the rear site, that, that 1,500 square feet of coach house, which is, which is 20 feet, 28 feet north of where our existing rear elevation will be, that shades and provides shadow on one portion of, you know, the Waterloo Court property. And effectively, when we remove that, it's improving the, the solar gain over the months and years for a portion of the Waterloo property. So the amount of square footage that we're taking off kind of equates with the amount of shade that we're taking off. And the amount of square footage that's equal that we're building is effectively going to be producing, you know, an equivalent amount of shade on the Waterloo property, but just in a different area of their particular building. Their building is an L-shaped kind of jog configuration, similar to our site. And it's irregular. And I think what, what's interesting to note is that the east and west neighbors, their, their buildings are facing south. Their rear yards are being shaded effectively by their buildings. Any building that's oriented to the south of their yard and their open space is going to be shading their own rear yard.
So in your opinion, the net effect of this is, is it positive or negative?
I think from a shade and shadow analysis, it, it would be, it would be equal.
And how about from a quality of life?
Well, from a quality of life, I mean, I think all the neighbors have agreed that the site is being improved by eliminating the coach house, right? And we had studied, you know, so that's, that's one benefit. I think the quality of life back there has got to be being improved by providing an 800-square-foot landscaped rear yard open space. I mean, that's without question. I mean, the, the existing conditions, looking at the, you know, the pavement, the drainage issues, you know, the rats are, you know, it's all, and you can see there, these two garages, you know, are, are affect, they're budding their rear alley. I mean, there's no, they're providing, they have no rear yard open space themselves. So the 800 square feet plus the open driveway that this project is, is, is providing is, should be, you know, a market improvement.
Okay. And Marcelo, you were at all the meetings that Ms. Amina missed?
Yes, I did not communicate with her until she filed an objection earlier this week.
Okay, and then you immediately communicated with her, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, and she's representing a, the condo association. But you, as you understood it, several of the condo owners were happy with some of the concessions and accommodations you made, is that right?
Correct.
Anything else you can add to?
Just, just to respond in a couple, you know, additional ways. Amina mentioned, you know, the zoning code being there for a reason. It's important for the board to understand that under the current zoning, what could be built on this site would be a monstrosity compared to what is currently built and what we're proposing. The, we are set off our sides lot lines, you know, 11 feet. That's huge in this neighborhood. Our neighbors to the east and the west should, should, you know, stand again tremendously by us, you know, essentially making this permanent. Nobody's going to come in and revise what we're doing here. So in addition, the zoning code allows us of right to build a garage along the rear of our property where this green space is currently, we can put a garage that's L-shaped with the deck on, you know, on top. That would be far worse. So what we're proposing, if, if we're talking about the zoning code, is, you know, far more sensitive, less intrusive, and beneficial for the neighborhood than what we're proposing today. So that's my response to stay within the zoning code, don't ask for a variance. You know, what, what we're asking for is, is quite frankly innocent compared to what we could build without any zoning relief. Another item I wanted to respond to was, you know, Ben mentioned the coach house that him and his association look at it every day. Well, we're tearing that down, so that's another huge benefit. Ben failed to mention the electric pole that runs over there, currently runs over their patio there. So that's also being moved, another great benefit. And lastly, Ben mentioned privacy. And as we can see here, you know, this addition is being built in the location of their garage. So, you know, we, we've, if you also notice in this picture, we've, we've set windows further away from the rear of their building to accommodate their privacy as well. And that was a conscious design decision on our part.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think you have the essence of this from our point of view.
And I just wanted to quick confirm because I know, I, I know I asked Amina if she had any questions. I think I had a brain gap. So Ben, I just wanted to double confirm that you didn't have any questions of the applicant.
That's correct, thank you, I'm good with our questions.
Okay, great, thank you. So questions from the board to any party before, we've got the alderman on, I got to remember that. But questions from the board?
You know, I just, I want to circle back to the reasonable return analysis to see if I'm understanding it correctly, based on all the discussion that we had earlier. So I'm going to direct this to Marcelo. I mean, I, I, I read the document, I see that without the variation, you were projecting a 3% loss. And with the variation, you're projecting a 1% loss. But neither of those account for the tax credit that you were talking about, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then if I heard you correctly, whether the addition is built or not, the tax credit is, is really just with respect to the restoration of the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you're, so, so am I correct that whether we grant the variation or not, you'll, you'll, you'll be going for that tax credit?
Correct, but it is, it's not guaranteed, and we don't know what they'll approve it for exactly and how much it'll, it'll be. But we've pursued it enough, we have a confidence that it'll, it'll be enough that it'll justify the project for us. And, and again, as I've mentioned, we are long-term investors. So your average developer who would raise money to this project wouldn't touch it because most developers get in and get out. We are long buy and hold investors. What would look like an impossible return or a small return to, most developers, for us are cured with time. So. You, you, you don't see, you don't see this, you don't see developers taking on restorations like this. It's, it's, it's not a very profitable endeavor. The tax credits, you have to have a high level of expertise. Jack and his wife and their architectural team have a lot of experience in it. We've done it a number of times over years. So it's, it's a unique development opportunity that very few developers would pursue because it takes a specialized skill and, and experience in pursuing it.
Yeah, and I, I get that, I guess what I'm struggling with is why you need the additional units if you get the tax credit on the restoration of the building regardless of whether you get the additional units?
Well, it, the, the numbers still don't work without the addition and the tax credits. Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm sorry, this is Jolene Saul again. They don't work with the addition from what you submitted, so maybe it would be repeating a little bit what you said. But can you kind of dig into that a little bit more, since both options don't seem to be feasible?
The, the amount we would need to gain to make the project work with the addition is far, you know, it's more easily surmountable. And we're, we're more confident that we will receive enough credit to make it work with the addition being there in place.
And sorry, I know you answered this, can you remind me the cost, the estimated cost of the restoration?
On the existing building alone, we're looking at around a million and a half dollars. To, you know, upwards, upwards.
So you're estimating, I know it's not certain, a tax rate of about $300,000?
Correct.
So that would make, it looks like, I'm probably a little bit more complicated than this, that it would make both scenarios feasible?
Not according to my, you know, original analysis. I'm not sure in context of this sheet here, let's see.
I'm, I'm wondering, this is Amy McDonald, I'm wondering if part of it is, and this is something that I, I don't see on it, the reasonable return economic analysis, that's not to you as an individual, that's to your company, is that right? And then the way the tax.
Correct. The, the reasonable return was filled out as, you know, if we were a developer not pursuing tax credits, looking at this project, you know, applying, you know, the cap rate for this area, it, it wouldn't work. The tax credits only come to, you know, individual, the individual persons who put the building into operation for five-plus years. And it's complicated, you get that $300, $300,000 tax credit doesn't just go off the top. There's like alternative minimum tax, which I don't quite frankly understand. It's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar. You know, like you can just take that number and add $300,000 to it, it's far more complicated. And I, I quite frankly don't personally understand, it's, it's a, an accounting, we need an accounting, you know, expert to walk us through it.
And when you say five years, is it five years from when the project is completed and you've incurred all these costs? And then you have to wait another five years before you get any of that credit? So you're effectively operating at a loss and having made this investment for that period of time before you start to see any of that credit kick in?
The, the five years is a new wrinkle, the last time we did this, it wasn't around, so I'm, I'm not positive how that works. The arcons told us that once it's in service for five years, you can start taking the credit. So I, I haven't seen it done, so I, I'm not, you know, totally confident in how, and how that five years works.
I appreciate that.
Okay, and just, this is, this is helpful. I'm wondering just, and I know you've already said this, but like with your, with your, your personal plans, you just, you don't view this project as feasible for your company doing unless you can do the addition?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, I think we, we've got what we need.
Did you, did you want to? I missed being.
I would never forget about you, go right ahead.
Oh, okay.
You're already sworn in.
All right, well, I've waited a long time for this, but let me give the board a little bit of perspective. I would, I would like to go to the front elevations first. The Wellington elevation, before we go around. I like pictures, I'm a picture guy, I need to.
If you go to a.
Okay, no, no, we'll back one. Okay, so get you a context of the 600 block of Wellington, that's only one side of it. I had over the years tried to landmark this area from a Chicago landmark perspective. And the city's. the city's department said that there were too many non-contributing buildings that had been torn down and um, and they, you know, there were orange rated buildings, which you know are potentially landmarkable. So I was, you know, and part of this was um, this building on the left, which is currently 702 was a hundred and, I don't know, maybe 10-year-old farmhouse. And um, that building came down. And what has been built currently is what the community did not want to see. First of all, they were upset that the farmhouse came down. Um, and it obviously did not make economic sense, I guess, to the purchasers. And currently, I think there's four units on that building. Um, the other building to the east is, I think, about a 1960s, 70s townhouse. And then the buildings further east are a little bit more historic. On the other side of the street, which we don't have a picture of, there were two orange-rated buildings that were gray stones. And I was, uh, and then there was a frame house. And I was able to tear down the frame house and give them a four-unit building with the zoning up, upzoning in order for them to preserve the two uh orange-rated buildings on the other side. So I spent a lot of time on this block. And what is priceless is this building you see right now. So and what I did was immediately when I heard this building was up on the market, I was afraid that we would lose this building. And I, I'm not sure the Papas is new, but I put a zoning amendment to downzone this property because I, the neighborhood was very, very concerned about losing this building.
We were definitely aware.
Well, I was afraid that we wouldn't get a restoration, that we would get some nameless architecture um, that the neighborhood did not want. Now, if, if you would go to the 702 property now, and let's, because I know you had that picture of it, of 702.
Previous slide. It doesn't really show it.
For the benefit of, of the board, the alley, well, you can
Keep going, keep, keep going. Maybe one, well, yeah, it's right there. Yeah.
Okay. The alley is just immediately west of 702. So access to this historic property is from the rear and it's, it's houses. The coach house that's saying it very euphemistic. That coach house has been in building court since I've been alderman. And this building has been in building court for probably 10 years prior to, prior to this. Was an old professor. I'll give you, I'll give you an anecdote. Old professor owned these two properties. He got it in a card game in the 60s for 25 grand.
I'm not sure my colleagues know how long you've been alderman, too.
Well, 18 years, but I've been in the neighborhood for 40. Okay.
I just want everyone to know, that's all. Okay.
But this, the back of this property is hideous and dangerous.
There it is.
Yeah. I mean, this is what, this is, if you look to the left on the bottom, 702 abuts this thing immediately. Now, if I'm at 702 and I have, and the 702 has a deck on the top of that, there, that is a fire trap right there, that building. So the fact that this is not only gonna clean up the courts, um, I would be, I would not, they would run me out of town if this building came down. Not the coach house, but the building itself. So in, if this, this is not part of the open space, but it is open space once this building comes down. And, you know, the replacement, now look at the back of this building now. And you look at the addition, yes, it's gonna be closer to our Waterloo folks, but they have, you, you see the, the open cars, the exhaust. You see the open decks that are in building quarter or, or have been for many, many years. And you look at, that's not private. I'd rather look at the back of this newer building with no decks, no exterior staircases and have, you know, the, more of a privacy than what's there now. Um, and I just, I know that there is some, uh, there's going to be some shade issues, but I think the net effect, I think, is going to be, number one, I think there's going to be some effect, but I also believe that the Papas is are working with the Waterloo especially about how to make that landscape barrier between the back of their property and the, the side yard of the Waterloo uh townhouse. And um, the other thing that, the other, the other uh photo that I think can, can, can sell uh, I'm not selling, but can explain a little bit. Can you go back to, I think, the last frame where I think you had the, the, the rear yard as it looks from the uh seven, from 702 looking east? It's, I think it was your last slide. You know? No, I think you're going, okay, right here. Okay. So 702, if I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, is on their rear property line. That is their garage. Now,
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, I'm hearing this testimony that the Papas could build this structure, not, not the deck, but they could build this structure on their rear property line, which would be approximately X number of feet from the Waterloo townhomes. They can do that now, even if they restore the front. They can take the coach house down and build a garage that would be that high, and it would really, in my opinion, really exacerbate the quality of life on our Waterloo residents. Am I wrong in that statement?
No, you're correct.
So, yes, the, the, the back is coming out. Um, and that's the reason for the variation, but I believe that overall security, privacy and uh light um and landscape plan um, has, you know, it's, it's not perfect for our neighbors on Waterloo. But I'm telling you, this is gonna be a substantial improvement to the neighborhood. And I think it'll be a substantial improvement even to the neighbors that abut this. Um, and that's why I'm, I'm supportive of, I did put a letter in, I believe. Um, I know we've, we've worked closely with our neighbors. Um, but I am I'm, you know, I am satisfied, um, because I, you know, I, I'm not an economist, but I know what is not talked about that I haven't heard in the testimony today is, you know, you're talking, what is the overall? What's the overall project? It's not just the one and a half for the front, it's the land cost and the cost for everything else? I mean, this looks, tell me what it is. Is this an eight to 10 million dollar project?
With the land costs and everything, uh, and the addition, we're looking at six to seven.
Okay, well, it's not, it's, but to me, this is, um, you know, this building is irreplaceable at any cost.
Agreed.
And, you know, I just feel strongly that um, the compromises they've met are not gonna satisfy um, some of the immediate neighbors. Some of the immediate neighbors have voiced their support. Um, but I'm telling you, this to me is worth, worth the variation. So that's all that I want to say on it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Alderman. Thanks for, thanks for showing up on this one. And also, if you, if you prior, we appreciate your time on the Friday evening. Um, so with that, I don't think we have any additional questions from the board. Um, I think we have everything we need. Um, so Tom, unless you have any closing, which unless there's anything new, I just recommend you don't take, um, we'll move on.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for your time. Thanks for spending the time necessary to understand this.
Yep. Alright, thanks, Armand. We'll take this under consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's go to calendar number, and we'll take a break somewhat shortly. I, I'm hoping we can get through, um
Oh gosh, my three D renderings were really
Uh, hold on, I'll mute you. Okay, there we go. Um, let's do one more and then let's potentially take a break. I want to get through the ones we can do quickly, very quickly, because there's still um, a good amount left. So we're gonna go to calendar 402 dash 21 dash Z, and this is at 5630 dash 32 North Broadway. So Counselor John Pekarsky, let us know when you're on. Hey, John, I know you're um signed in. It just looks like you're muted.
You guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Armand. Um, just waiting to see if John, I know he's trying to get on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can. Go right ahead, Counselor.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Pekarsky. I'm an attorney with offices at 55 West Monroe Street. And uh, this evening, I represent Armand Candia. Armand uh has been a developer on the north side of the city of Chicago for a relatively long period of time. And uh, is purchasing uh 5630 North Broadway. Uh, this is a, a very interesting, but a very simple variation triggered by the fact that the property in question is an irregular-shaped lot. Uh, if we can go to the survey, I think it explains everything that we need. Uh, this is the front, of course, but if we can go to the survey. Okay, well, this is the site plan. Uh, as you can see, it is on an alley that is at a, an angle. Uh, the property uh measures 50 frontage feet. But uh, uh, at, at the south side, it's 125 feet, which is fine. Uh, but at the north side, it is 96 feet. Thus, we have an angle at the east side. Uh, the building, any building uh would be impossible or very difficult to design with that sort of an angle. You need uh basically a rectangular-shaped building with uh 90-degree angles. Uh, what we are seeking is a variation of the side yard, uh, strike that, of the rear yard triggered by the uh fact that uh we have a uh, a very short 96-foot uh north lot line. If, if you can go to the uh site plan or the first floor uh plan, you can see how we are able to uh create uh, a basically rectangular and right-angle-shaped building so as to uh, make this uh a viable functioning uh building. Uh, as, as I said, the building is zoned, or correction, the property is zoned B13. Uh, and we are seeking a rear yard variation. Uh, with that, uh, I would uh call as my first witness, Mr. Armand Candia. Armand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Armand, uh, you, you are the developer of the proposed site, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can we put up the uh
John, real quick, let's just get Armand sworn in. Um, so, Armand, can you please state your name and address?
Armand Candia, 2820 West Berlin, Chicago, Illinois, 60625.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Alright, great. Go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, you might as well swear in our uh architect, Chris Bremer. Chris?
Yep, right, you are. Yeah, so Chris, um, can you state your name and address?
Christopher Bremer, 1016 West Jackson Boulevard, number 312, Chicago, Illinois, 60607.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Now, Armand, uh, can you uh explain, explain the challenge uh that is given to you by the fact that you have a, an irregular-shaped lot?
You know, we tried to look at every option, um, and it just didn't work. Basically, we, we get this triangle-looking building in, in, in the rear. Kind of screws up the parking and the entire unit just gets completely chopped up. And it just, you just can't build anything there with that, with that alley just cutting through your lot. So we've looked at other, other ways to do it, and there just is no way to do it.
And this is truly kind of a unique situation, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I mean, it seems like that's, this is like the textbook uh case for, you know, variations. It's where, you know, the alley is cutting through your lot, and it's not a standard city lot.
Right. And the variation is, is only uh along the uh north lot line, is that correct?
Correct. Well, uh, I think, is it the south or Chris?
South lot line.
The south lot line, right.
I'm sorry, south lot line. Uh, and the north lot line, you are not seeking a variation, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, uh, if uh, I have prepared on your behalf an affidavit which contains all the criteria about this uh unique uh lot and about uh the variations that we are seeking. Uh, is that, have, uh, are you familiar with the fact that I have prepared such a uh, an affidavit?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and if I ask you the questions that appeared in that affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes, sir.
With that, I would call uh Chris Bremer. Chris, uh, please state your name, address, and occupation.
Christopher Bremer, 1016 West Jackson Boulevard, number 312, Chicago, Illinois, 60607. Uh, I am the architect of record and the owner of Compass Architecture.
Uh, can you please explain the challenges presented to you by the configuration, this unusual configuration, uh, this unique configuration uh of this lot?
Well, it's in the interpretation of a rear yard setback on a lot that is irregular in shape. So whereas normally, the setback would be in a situation like this for the residential floors, 30 feet from the rear property line. Um, the Department of Zoning interprets that as the rear property line and the diagonal. So if we've already lost 30 feet of lot depth because of the angle, we essentially lose an additional 30 feet due to that interpretation. Uh, so it severely restricts the buildable area.
And, and uh, can you explain uh your drawings and how they addressed this problem?
Well, we're able to seek a reduction of the rear yard by fifty percent when there is a hardship such as this, missing a corner of our lot. And so if you look at the plans of the residential floors, you can see that we kind of stepped the building back from the, the missing corner of the lot.
And this building contains a first floor commercial with four dwelling units above it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, I have prepared an affidavit on your behalf. Is that correct?
You have.
And if I ask you the same questions that appeared in that affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
They would.
I have no further questions of either the client or the architect.
Thanks, Counselor. And so we have a letter of opposition on this, so we're wondering if we can just hear a little bit about your communications, if any, with the Alderman?
We've had no communication with the Alderman.
Okay.
Was there, was the opposition from the Alderman?
Yes, yeah, from the office.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, you know, simple letter that is publicly available, but I want to confirm that Dan Luna is not on. And I'm I'm looking.
Candidly, this, this variation is so self-explanatory that I, I would not have believed that there would be any possible question about it.
Yeah, and I think, well, it was based on more lack of communication with the Alderman. I, I don't see anyone on from the Alderman's office to give any context, and I'm gonna wait to see if anyone will raise their hand to say that they are from the office. Just, just a few seconds. Okay, any questions from the board?
Well, I guess I'll just ask one question. You can reach out to the Alderman. How about, and was there any community outreach?
We did. If I'm not mistaken, the client did talk to the neighbor, adjoining neighbor and did receive his verbal or recommendation, favorable recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, he was just concerned about how his roof somehow over the years was attached to my brick wall, and he just wanted to make sure that I worked with him when I demolished the existing structure, and I said, absolutely. So that was, that was his only concern, but no one's, you know, we had a public notice sign up there. He's the only one that ever called me and and that was pretty much it. So I wasn't aware that I needed to, you know, hold a community meeting or anything like that or, you know. So. Thank you.
Great, okay. And any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this one under consideration. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get, um, let's, let's do, let's go to the next one and then we'll do a quick break. Tom, I believe we are with you on this and that there, there is opposition, but it's for calendar number four oh three dash twenty one dash Z. And this is at forty three forty three South Forestville Avenue in the fourth ward. Let's make sure the objectors are signed in.
Hello?
Oh, is this Dr. Lana?
Yes, this is she. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, good. Okay, thank you for being on. We'll circle back to you at the right time. And I'm also seeing if there is a Dennis Walsh on, a Dr. Angelica Lana, and a Janay Winters. Dr. Valentina Lana, am I correct that Dr. Angelica will not be on?
That's right. That's my sister. She won't be on this call right now.
Okay, great. So do we have a Dennis Walsh and a Janay Winters? Let's see.
Chairman, we have Janay Winters, but I don't see that Dennis Walsh.
Okay, great. And, and Janay is promoted. Okay, do we have anyone from the Alderman's office on this? I believe this is Sophia King's office. Looks like not. All right, great. So another little quick truncated review on how we do these when we have objectors. The applicant will put on their case in chief and answer any questions from the board. Then we'll go to the objectors. You can state your objections. We ask that you not be repetitive, but at that time you can also ask questions of the applicant. Then it will go back to the applicant and they will be able to do rebuttal or cross-questioning on, towards the objectors. This whole time, the board can ask questions and from there, we close it out. So with that, Counselor, if you could just take it away.
I, I believe there is only one objector and that's Professor Lana. Is that correct?
We have a Janay Winters as well, who, who logged on in time, signed up as a objector.
Okay, fine. My name is.
It looks like, it looks like we have, oh, Angelina Borromeo is on, she has her hand raised. We, we, Ms. Borromeo, we've got you. Don't worry. So the Counselor will, will get you all sworn in in a second.
Angelica Borromeo is the architect. Well, again, for the record, my name is John Pekarsky. And I represent William Dobbs. William is, is doing what we hope many people will be doing, moving from the suburbs back into the city and developing a, a site, spending significant amounts of money in developing into a very, very nice area of the city. The property in question is unusual inasmuch as it's a missing tooth. The properties at forty three twenty nine, forty three thirty one, forty three thirty three, forty three thirty five, forty three thirty seven, forty three thirty nine, and forty three forty one are all developed with townhouses. The property in question was also developed with a two, two dwelling unit townhouse that has been removed. Now, Professor Lana has seen fit to use the side yard and we have no objection to that, of course, but we now own it and we would like to build on it. The property is unique inasmuch as it is, it is a twenty foot lot. So we are seeking the variations for both side yards and total side yards. The property in question was purchased by my client. And as it, as I mentioned, he is seeking to enter, to live in the city, which is something that we should all applaud. I would call as my first witness, William Dobbs. William?
I'm here.
Hey, then John, let me, let's get him sworn in. So, Mr. Dobbs, can you please state your name and address?
William Dobbs, forty six Inglewood Avenue, Baywood, Illinois, Chicago, I mean, six oh one oh four.
Great, thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Uh, yes, sir.
Great, thank you very much. And Angelina Borromeo, I'll get you sworn in as well. Ms. Borromeo, will you please state your name and address?
Angelica Borromeo. I'm the architect, seventy three forty North Mead Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four six.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
William, please state your name, address, and occupation.
Uh, William Dobbs, forty six Inglewood Avenue, Baywood, Illinois, six zero one zero four. I'm a general contractor, doing coast to coast construction.
Now, sir, you have purchased the property in question. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, what, what did you pay for that property?
Fifty six thousand.
And you intend to build your own townhouse. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the plan.
And it's going to be a single family residence?
Yes, sir.
What do you estimate the cost of construction of that building would be? I'm sorry, I.
Right under four hundred thousand.
And, and, and real quick, John, let me cut in. If you're not speaking, can you just go ahead and mute? We're having some feedback going on, so let's see if that can get rid of it.
Okay, I thought it was my, my end of it. I'm glad it isn't. Okay, now, tell me about the house that you, you intend to build.
I'll build, I intend to build a two-story row house that's identical to all the row houses on that side of the street.
And was that your instruction to Angelica Borromeo, the architect?
Yes.
Okay. Or your intention was it, was to be contextual with the remaining townhouse or row houses on the block?
Yes.
As a builder and developer, would you say that the that the development and the context of the block is row houses?
Correct.
Now, if you were required to build to the zoning ordinance, you'd probably have to take off four feet, two feet on each side. Is that correct?
Correct.
That would give you a sixteen foot house. Is that correct?
Correct.
I take it that on its face, it's an impossibility. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, the as far as the location of the variations, they would be on either side. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, are you familiar with the fact that the city has standards regarding construction and development when it's adjacent to adjacent properties?
Yes.
And is it your intention to meet or exceed all of the city's standards regarding shoring and development of the subject site?
Yes.
Now, is it also true that your neighbor, Mrs. Lana, actually intrudes onto your property?
Yes.
Now, if the variations that we are seeking are not granted, what would you do?
Oh, possibly wait, hold out. I mean.
Well, you certainly wouldn't go ahead and build a sixteen foot building, would you?
Correct.
Okay, fine. I really have no further questions of, of the client. Does the board?
Yeah, John, do you maybe want to, do you have any questions for the architect?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe if we can do that fairly quickly and then take questions from the board for the applicant?
Okay, Angelica, please state your name, address, and occupation.
Angelica Borromeo, seventy three forty North Mead Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four six. I'm an architect. I want to add something before we get lost on this. I want to explain that the party wall that is facing the south side, the south facing wall of the building belongs to forty three forty three South Forestville. With the city Water Department's documents show that there was an existing two-story building in that location. And it was demolished for some reason. We do not know. But I just want to emphasize that the party wall is already there and it belongs to the client, Mr. Dobbs.
Fine. Now, when, when you were retained to design a building, what was the charge that Mr. Mr. Dobbs gave you as far as context?
Okay, the, the first thing we did was look at the property and I did a lot of research before I designed the building. I look at all the job sites, the, the buildings in the area and see that my design will be in conformance and in conjunction with the character of the buildings that is in the area. And when I was having the surveyor come in, I made sure that we measured the building and the property itself, it was only eighteen feet. So I, because the, the assessor's office is showing that the building is twenty feet. So I made sure that when the surveyor came in, it shows that the property south face of the building is, belongs to forty three forty three. So the row houses in there are ready next to each, they're all like party walls in there except for one side of forty three forty three, which we're gonna set back six, nine inches. So the only thing different here is the setback of nine inches on one side, so we can have windows on that side of the building.
Okay, and
Sorry.
The property in question, is it contextual with the, with, with or structure, the design in question? Is it contextual with forty three twenty nine, thirty one, thirty three, thirty five, thirty seven, thirty nine, and forty one, South Forestville?
Yes, it is.
Are you familiar with the fact that the building that was taken down was actually a two flat? Is that correct?
That's correct. And William, the client wanted to just have a one unit building so that to give some kind of okay from the next door neighbor. He did talk to them and made sure that he will comply with the requirements of the city. The construction type will be non-combustible, so there is the life and safety issues has been addressed. And I want to point out that we did submit this to the City of Chicago Building Department and all the disciplines are already been approved. So life and safety issue will not be a problem.
Now, are, are we giving feedback? Well, I have prepared on your behalf an affidavit. Is that correct?
Yes.
And if I ask you the same questions that appeared in that affidavit, would your answers be the same?
Yes.
Okay, fine. I have no further questions of, of Mrs. Borromeo.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So this question just goes to either the architect or the applicant. Just wondering if you can explain a little bit of why a sixteen foot wide home is not feasible? And John, John, and sorry, sorry, John, can And John, John, and sorry, um, John, can you mute? First, I think the feedback might be coming from you, so can you mute while you're not speaking?
Let me try something.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dobbs.
Yeah, once you add the walls, the installation, and the drywall, that sixteen feet drop down to about, you lose an extra two feet on each side. So now you're talking a fourteen-foot house. And every house, well, eighty-five percent of houses on that street are row houses. What I'm proposing is a row house. Uh, both of my neighbors' property not only touch my property line, they encroach my property. So what they're basically saying, in my opinion, is that it's okay for them to touch my property line, but it's not okay for me to touch their property line. Uh, so what I'm asking is, uh, not to impose upon no one else's property line, I'm asking for the same liberties that they have. They went all the way up to their property line, I want to be able to do the same thing.
Yep, and, okay, and just so, you know, this is just a hypothetical, but say it was a fourteen-foot wide home, um, could the architect talk about if that's in any way possible to design rooms in?
Uh, was that, uh, was that addressed to the architect, or was that addressed to me?
I think the architect, um, would be great to have answer it, so basically, you know, can you design a livable fourteen-foot wide home?
Uh, the problem with having a fourteen-five, well, it won't conform with the character of the area. It used to be, uh, nine row houses, and if we have suddenly a two feet on each side, it won't conform with the, with the existing character of the nine row houses that's in there. That's one issue. Another issue is that this property is allowed, it's an RT four, it is allowed one point two of the FAR. So in that case, we will have a very tall building, which will not conform with the character in the area. And that's why we designed it that way, to get back to what it was. In essence, we are building what was built there before. Uh, the party wall, we capped, which belongs to Mr. Dobbs. And then we did set back nine inches on one side, because the windows are gonna be angled, and we're gonna have natural light and vent in that side of the area. And another issue is that in architectural design, when you have a long building and a, a very narrow width, it doesn't make sense architecturally, it will not be livable, because then your light and vent will only be the front and the back, because actually, you still have to have a three-feet, uh, setback on each side anyhow, so it won't work. And structurally, another issue structurally is that since the party wall is already there, that belongs to forty-three forty-three, we want to make the use of it, because the row houses are right there, and, you know, to have two feet and two feet on each side will not conform with the character of the area. Across the street is also, uh, row houses in there, and I made sure when I designed the building, I conformed with the character in the whole neighborhood, not just on that side, but also on the opposite side.
Good, thank you. Yeah, thank you, um, okay, any questions from the board before we go to the objectors? All right, um, so to go to the objectors, um, Dr. Lana, would you like to begin? And if so, I'll get you sworn in.
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, great, will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir, my name is Valentina Lana, my address is forty-three forty-five South Forestville, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five three.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, great, um, go right ahead and let us know your objection.
Well, uh, first of all, good evening, everybody, and thank you for, uh, listening to my objection. Um, so I recently actually purchased a property, the property, I closed on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, and, um, as the new and current owner of this properly, property, I wholeheartedly object to Mr. Williams' build-out plan for a number of reasons. Um, however, if my sole objection does not suffice at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Chairman to please, um, grant a continuance to resolve this matter, so that I find proper counsel to assist me, um, and again, being new to this issue, give me the opportunity to gather all pertinent information to properly resolve this matter. So, I, I literally just closed less than a month ago, and, um.
Mr. Chairman, I cannot hear a word that the, uh, objector is saying.
Okay, um, Dr. Lana, I, I do hear you, but for the counselor's, um, benefit, can you, can you do a favor and just speak up a bit?
Yes, of course, sorry about that. Can you hear me now, sir?
Yes, yes, very well.
Okay, great, um, so as I was saying, um, I recently purchased a property, I purchased it, uh, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, and, um, as the new and current owner, um, I wholeheartedly object to Mr. William Dodd's, uh, build-out plans for a number of reasons. But as I was saying, because, um, I am new to the situation, um, unfortunately, I have some, I had some misinformation that was given at the time of purchase, um, and I just don't have a complete picture of what exactly is going on. So I was asking if I was able to, uh, get a continuance so that I may find proper counsel to assist me with this matter, and also for me to gather all the pertinent information that I would need to present, um, you know, a valid and concise case to yourself and, and the board. Is that possible?
Um, Dr. Lana, just a few questions, um, for you, so which property did you recently purchase?
Forty-three forty-five South Forestville, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five three. And also, if I may, uh, I'm sure that, um, this was again, further misinformation, but I never utilized that lot ever, I just moved in, I never even stepped foot in that lot. From what I understand, the previous owners, um, Ms. Winter, uh, you know, the previous owners used that lot, I think. But again, I heard that from the neighbor, so I, I am not a hundred percent sure, but I myself, um, and no one in my household has ever stepped foot in that lot. Um, and if I may add, I'm not sure if Roger Carter is on the call right now, but he's, um, I think forty, wait, I'm forty-three forty-five, so that one is forty-three forty-one. Uh, my neighbor to the north of me, I spoke with him yesterday, and he also objects, I'm sure he has to speak for himself, but, um, he also noted that he wanted to object the build-out for similar reasons as I do.
Okay, do you think there's any questions that, um, because you have, you have the opportunity right now to ask any questions of the applicant. Um, do you think it's, it's helpful that, that you ask some questions of the applicant right now?
Sure, I, I wanted to know, um, uh, you know, when, when did, I, I know you, you mentioned that there was a two-story home before the lot. When was that demolished?
Uh, Mrs. Borromeo, uh, are you familiar with that?
What is the question?
When was the previous, um, two-story home that you mentioned demolished, what year?
Well, okay, the city of Chicago has a building permit, a building, uh, Department of Building instituted building permits in nineteen fifty-seven. This building was shown in the water department that shows that it was, uh, nineteen forty-nine. It shows that it was there and, and, and was a two-flat, two units. So that's, if you can, you can look it up in, uh, water records in the city of Chicago. Uh, they don't mention when this was built, they don't mention when it was, was demolished. When, when buildings are demolished by city of Chicago, they do not have records of it. So, we, we are not sure, I can't answer you that question of when this building was demolished. All I know is the information coming from the planning department shows that this building, it is in existence in nineteen forty-nine, as a two-flat.
Okay, so, okay, so over seven years ago, we could assume.
Right, um, demolished, I don't know when, sorry about that. They have no record either, but, um, historically, in the city of Chicago, if the city of Chicago demolished the building, they won't have any record of it, that's my understanding.
Okay, so the last record that we have about that particular two-flat, was it from nineteen forty-nine, though?
That's what's showing in the water department. They only show in the water department when they, when they have record or when you start paying the water, the water bill. But it doesn't say that this building wasn't built way before nineteen forty-nine.
I'm sorry, I'm going to object, this line of questioning is not relevant.
Uh, Counselor Pekarski, and, and Counselor, um, I, I kind of opened up the, um, the line of questioning for the objector as it relates to her gathered information, whether we continue this or not. I want to see if we can square some, some things up now. So, so this was, um, I, I kind of opened it up.
Um, one of the big reasons, uh, why I asked that question is because, um, from my understanding, it hasn't been a row house in, for many, many years at this point, and, um, I bought this house on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, literally less than a month ago, with the notion and the understanding from, uh, everyone involved that this was a standalone building. That's why I bought it. Um, and then my follow-up question is, ma'am, do you know, uh, how old the row houses are across the street?
Do we have an estimate on that, Mrs. Borromeo?
Okay, um, when, when I inquired about this particular lot, the information I got is only for forty-three forty-three. I have no information on the, across the street, on when it was built. I, I have no idea, I'm sorry.
It's okay, the reason why I asked is because you mentioned the character of the neighborhood, so I thought maybe you knew, uh, that detail. Um, but I've been a resident in the Brownsville area, uh, for about six years now, and frankly, um, Forestville, which is a very short block, I think there's maybe, hmm, like, ten houses on each side of the street, um, is probably the only block that I've seen in Brownsville, or maybe one of the fewest that I've seen that has row houses. So it's not a character of the neighborhood, it's maybe, you could say, a character of the block. Um, but like I said before, I purchased the house with the notion that, uh, no one is gonna build on, on the, the lot beside it, and this was a standalone property. Um, and that's why, sir, I was asking for a continuance, because everything is very new to me. But not only that, I was misinformed in different ways, and I'm sure it wasn't intentional, it's just, you know, life happens, things happen, but, um, I, I feel like at this time, I'm not fully equipped to, uh.
No, I hear you, so I want to ask one question, and then I think I might, um, decide on that, um, continuance. Um, to the applicant, is there gonna be a gap at all between the house that is built on forty-three forty-three and forty-three forty-five? Or will they share, will they share a wall? I, I thought maybe there would be nine inches.
Well, uh, you're about ninety percent correct. In the very front of the house, there is a small part that touches, but in the back of the house, that's where all your natural light comes in. Um, I don't know if you have the plans in front of you, but we get to get all the, uh, the building plans as well as, uh, plot survey, oh, if you take a look at that plot survey, her property actually sits on my property. And when she says she was misinformed, I'm sure she was, because the previous owner had a contentious relationship with the previous owner of my property. And what the previous owner thought, she thought she owned the lot when she bought the house. She later found out she didn't, she had an opportunity to buy the lot, she didn't. I bought the lot, so one of the things she told me before she moved was, uh, she had no actual prob- problem with me building the house, she wanted to wait till she sold her house, which I didn't think was a good idea, but I see now she was buying time, so she could dump the house on somebody else and.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I'm telling you, this is my opinion, I ain't no lawyer, and I'm not God. But this, if, if you knew, uh, you wanted me to wait till you sold, or, you know, you didn't feel comfortable till you sold, if that, you, you don't, if you are always encroaching on my property line already, and I'm jumping back and forth now, because I don't really, I want to take back what I said, I don't know what her intentions was, it's just my opinion. My, but, but what I do want to state, both properties on both sides of me are touching my property line. And one of them not only touching my property line, it sits on my property. The other one has a little piece that sits on my property, so neither property on side of me, uh, has adhered to no setbacks, so.
And Mr. Dobbs, do you mind if I cut in for a second?
Uh-huh.
Um, so I think, you know, I think that there just seems to be like information that's, that's needed here. Um, you know, that has nothing to do with the result, I think that, um, this, this lot is being sold to be built upon, but I'd like to recommend that we do do a really fast one-month continuance, um, in which time, um, I think that, um, clearly you both are new, like, Dr. Lana just moved in as well, so if you guys can gather information from each other, and then maybe also the alderman's office, um, and, and we can come back next month confident with the information we have. I hate to have this voted upon when the right information isn't, isn't out there.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that, and I, I would like to inter- uh, uh, jack, uh, interject that the alderman is not opposed.
Yep, no, and, and you're absolutely right, we had a, we had a lot, you're absolutely right. Um, so I'm gonna be continuing, I do want to give, because she's waited all day long, um, a, an opportunity for Janay Winters, um, to say something, but, um, Janay, just so you know, we're continuing, so not really on the substance of the matter now, but, um, uh, will you state your name and address, please?
Janay Winters, eight nineteen East Fifty-third Street, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one five.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, so I know you heard what, what we just decided to do, but with that, go right ahead.
Um, so I did oppose to, to the building being attached to forty-three forty-five as I was the previous owner. Um, I was approached by Mr. Dyes, his contractor, the previous owners, multiple times, and I expressed to him, which he incorrectly stated, I expressed, I did not want it, whether I was the current owner or even once I decided to sell. Um, at the time when I was the current owner, I told him, I did not want anything built on our house. Um, we have a blocked sunlight, we just didn't want anything built. Once we decided to sell, I said it wouldn't, I couldn't in good conscience allow you to build anything, give you permission to build anything, knowing that there was a new owner, potential new owner coming in. I told him flat out, no, I have emails from our attorneys, his attorney stating as much. Um, before.
I think this all goes into, I, I think that a month will be a lot of time for everyone to communicate and maybe come to some type of resolution here. We're not gonna finish, or we're not gonna come to any resolution on this call, just because we've already decided to, um, to continue. So I ask, now that we formally continue it, and that these conversations are all moved, um, offline.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so, we, thanks everyone for staying, staying until this point, especially with this result. But again, um, this is calendar number four oh three dash twenty-one dash C, and we will be continuing one month, which is, um, October, one second, October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, we'll hear this matter on. And, and thank you, everyone, again.
Thank you as well.
Thank you, sir.
No further notice will be given. Um, I know it's getting late, I'm gonna call a ten-minute break. No further notice will be given. Um, I know it's getting late. I'm gonna call a ten-minute break, um, because um, board's gotta move their legs for a second. So, um, we're gonna take recess until seven-ten PM. Um, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Phil?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great. I wrote yes. You have, I see everyone at seven-ten.
...